I call the meeting to order. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. We were in closed session for housing and we are out with nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the housing authority.
So moved. Second.
Housing is adjourned.
Okay, welcome to the February 23 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Raymond, Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by the Reverend Skip Lindeman of Akenyatta Congregational Church.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forth which stands, united nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Oh God, we thank you for this day and for all of our many blessings. We also thank you for the privilege of living in this wonderful city, in this wonderful country. Thank you for the privilege of doing the people's business. Let us deliberate fairly and justly so that we may serve all your people, not only a select few. Help us to be not only faithful public servants, but also faithful stewards of the power you have entrusted to us. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the February 23, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 18, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
Next at 3:00 A. is under presentation appointments is the agenda preview for the meetings of March 2nd to 2010.
Mr. Starbird?
Yes, I'll go to Assistant City Manager Bob McFall for the report. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Next week, March 2nd. First, the housing authority, there's no specific action items. However, under the redevelopment agency meeting starting at 2:30, there is one item. This is a report from the Director of Community Redevelopment Housing regarding the installation of four additional lights along the public alley, construction of a mid-block pedestrian crosswalk on South Louise Street, and construction of a pedestrian opening along the north side of the marketplace public parking garage for the Meeting Society of Los Angeles located at 117 South Louise Street. That evening at City Council, beginning at 6 o'clock, there are a couple of action items. These include a report from the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This is to request for approval to dispense with competitive bidding and issue a contract change order to provide for temporary meter readers and supplemental customer service personnel for fiscal years 2009-10 and 2010-11. This will be followed up by another report from the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power. This report being a proposed agreement to receive the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009 grant funds to implement the Glendale AMI Smart Grid Initiative. Be it for next week?
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Previous presentation, I'm Mr. Ted Ayala, Executive Director of Montrose Chambers.
Mr. Ayala.
Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me here to this council meeting. I am the new Executive Director for the Montrose Verdigo Chamber. This is my, it's gonna be a month now that I've started over here. It's a very deep honor for me to work, not just for the city of Glendale, but working for the community of Montrose. It's a community that, though I'm not a resident of, I've been very closely involved in that community for the past several years. My mother actually used to work at the Ralphs, I'm sorry, not the Ralphs, the Bonds off of Verdugo. And ever since I first saw this community, I was struck by just what a beautiful gem it is, not only within the city of Glendale, but also within the county of Los Angeles. Really is unlike anything you see around Southern California. I hope to be able to work closely with all of you in the future. I hope to do many good things, not only for the chamber, but for the community as well. And I urge you for any questions, any comments, anything you'd like to say, just feel free to call us over here at the chamber. You can always call me at my office, which is 818-249-7171, and I'm at your service. Thank you very much.
How about your?
Thank you on behalf of the chamber for a wonderful Founder's Day last week.
Sure. How about your website? Why don't you give us?
Well, yes, actually, we do have a whole website. You can find us at montrosechamber.org, and we also have a Facebook as well.
Okay, great. Welcome. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, please.
There's another presentation at 3:00.
Okay, I have a presentation from some very, very smart students, some excellent, smart, and good-looking students from Kepler Elementary School. So we'd like to have them come here to the podium with their teacher and whoever else wants to, so everyone can get up and come here to the podium.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. My fifth grade students did a 2010 census commercial, and we just wanted to show it to you.
Okay, well, we're gonna show it, and the moms can come and take.
Sure. And I'm Nollany from Glendale Water and Power. We're so proud of this class and for April, their teacher. She is such an example of a leader in our community. Back in December, I visited our committee, the Glendale Green and Beautiful, and told them about some exciting programs we have for a website called Green Allowance. They introduced me to April. April introduced the concept to her kids. They produced a video on solar energy. They produced another video on the Green Allowance program. And here they are in a one-month's time with their third public service announcement. So we are super proud of these kids.
Great. And after the video, we're going to give you some pins that you can wear, and then we're also gonna ask you to come to the mic there and give us your name. Okay? So let's see the video.
Hi, I'm Montez reporting from Mark Temple School. Ask people about the 2010 census. Let's ask some fifth graders what they know about the census.
Hi, what do you guys know about the census?
It's important, easy, and safe, and very confidential.
Ten questions, ten minutes.
Let's go look at what this fifth grade class knows about the census.
Hi, girls, sorry for interrupting, but do you guys know what the census is and how it's used?
Census is the count that the government does every 10 years, and it's even in the Constitution.
The census is used to gather important information about all the people in the United States.
The census is also used for new schools, better roads, or more parks and libraries.
Boys, what do you know about the census?
Well, did you know if 1% of Glendale does not file out the census, that Glendale will lose $5 million?
I'm with the Principal of Mark Temple School, Dr. Mary Mason. So, Dr. Mason, why do you think the census is important?
The census is very important, and so when the survey comes out to your home, you need to make sure that you fill it out. It's very, very important that everyone is counted. Our schools and our city rely on the census information and the correct count so that we can receive the right funding for our schools. So please encourage everyone to fill out their census survey.
Well, there you have it. Stay from the kids and the Principal of Mark Temple School. You're counting Glendale, and Glendale's counting on you. From Mark Temple School, I'm Montez Scandarian.
Census form and information about how to complete it will be available in many different languages.
I think everybody should be counted for the census, babies, elderly citizens, and non-citizens.
The census doesn't care if you're here legally, just if you live here.
Todos van a ser contados.
One more itafo na xulat bak dumadin.
Meiri omenen bariji masayy. Neeyongal chagaasawal iri kaji ponejusey.
Hesteyev apahov tasa harst tasa rope.
Ne vikidvete anketu kada poluchte yu poposhi. Zapolunte anketu yu отправte obratna na 1-ve aprilia. It's ochen lekhoi bezopasne. 10 voprosi, 10 minut. Vse doshne bui poshitane.
It's important, easy, and safe.
Ten questions, 10 minutes.
Go to www.2010.census.gov.
This PSA was brought to you by Ms. Pharaoh's fifth grade class.
Before they say their names, I just wanna say I'm so proud of them. They did everything, the storyboards, writing their lines, editing, they're just amazing. And they're only 10 and 11 years old, so I can't even imagine what else they're capable of in 10 more years, so.
That is just fantastic. You got, and by the way, just so we're clear, you know more about the census than 95% of everybody else in the United States. You guys know more. So anyway, okay, I'm gonna hand out some pins, and please come to the mic. Well, let us have your name, and then tell us what your favorite thing is. It doesn't have to be in school, just what your favorite, what your favorite thing is. Come to the mic.
I'm Ms. Gabrielle Glasson, and my favorite thing to do is acting.
I'm Samantha Hearn, and my favorite thing to do is math in school.
My name is Tonga Tzukazian, and I like to play the piano.
My name is Angela Corizio, and I like to build.
My name's Sage Claycomb, and I like acting.
My name's Montez Scandarian, and I like to play sports.
My name is Brian Christine Z, I like everything.
My name is Reese Aguilar, and I like basketball.
My name is Yvonne Twoson, I like dancing.
My name is Abhinash Padmanabhan, and I like to play tennis.
My name's Argysh Smiley, and I like to play sports.
My name is Gorgi Worken, I like to play sports.
Can I just quickly introduce our Vice Principal and our Principal, Dr. Mason, and Ms. Lisa Sundergard? They are so supportive with our art school, and because of their hard work writing grants, we're able to edit videos with this technology that we have at our school. So thank you. Thank you.
All right, students. You gotta go home and do their homework. Yeah. Well, yeah, cleared up a little. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next, please.
Next is City Council or staff comments.
City Council staff comments. Mr. Drayman.
Well, I just wanted to let the public know that the birthday party, the 97th birthday party for the first suburb of Glendale occurred on Sunday, Montrose Founder's Day. Town turned 97 years old, and it was nice to see a lot of the public there. About 10,000 of you turned out over the course of five hours to eat birthday cake and listen to presentations and speeches and hear about the history, learn about the history of the town, and enjoy the farmer's market and the collectibles and antiques, and take the kids on the rides, and good time was had by all. So thank you for coming, and I also want to thank my colleagues in the council and city staff for turning out and supporting the event. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It was a great event. The weather was perfect. The Montrose karma continues. Actually, sunshine that day. And yeah, it was great, Mr. Drayman. Everyone did a good job. The food was excellent, and lots of people, it was packed, that's for sure. Any staff comments?
I'm sorry I missed it, but my wife is better.
Glad to hear it, Mr. Weaver. This, I think, is the first one you've missed.
Yeah.
All right, next, please.
Next is consent items following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed, and we did have one card submitted for 5C.
For 5C.
Hi, Book. 1C.
5C.
Mayor, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call?
Council members, Raymond, Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Would you read 5C into the?
5C is Director of Libraries regarding appropriation of funds for grants awarded to the Glendale Public Libraries for various library services. That C1 is Resolution Appropriating $30,000.
Okay, I have one card from Harvey Pearson.
Council members, I'm Harvey Pearson. I just wanted to say that I think it's great that there's $20,000 that's going to be going to the Central Library Children's Room, and one of the things is wages that it's going to be covering. At the same time, being something of a stakeholder in effect of the Central Library in there all the time, I can't help but notice that the, there's not enough money for operations to continue, the same number of days and hours as in the past. Like Martin Luther King Day and President's Day, what used to be one day the library was closed is now three days. And Memorial Day would be the same, July 4th, Labor Day, and so on. And I can only assume that's because there's not enough money. And I've been reading about how there's gonna be $10 million to, for a capital improvement on that library, and it seems kind of extravagant when the operations need some money to spend that much money on a capital improvement. Library looks pretty good shape to me, as it is, you know. I mean, it would be nice, but operations would seem to need, be number one, it seemed to me. And then somebody told me, well, it's all done, it's all set up by law, you have, that money has to go there, it can't, it's not in the Constitution, I would think. Maybe they could change the law to transfer some of that money to the operations. I've seen people going to Los Angeles Public Libraries on Saturdays now, on those holidays. And yet, Antonio Viorgosa in LA, he's put on the table, what do you think if we close the libraries for the whole weekends, every weekend in Los Angeles? So that would take that out if they do that in Los Angeles. And I noticed in the library's website, Central Library's website, it was enlarged, there was 1942, two side wings were added, and then 31 years later, the present building opened. So that was 31 years that they managed to get in between, and they renovated this library about, I guess about nine, 10 years ago, so it's nowhere near 31 years. And it would be nice, but it just seems at a time of financial crisis that they have to make hard choices, and the operational hours would seem to be number one to me. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Move 5C.
Second.
Roll call?
Council members, Raymond, Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next would be Oral Communications.
All right, we'll start with Doris Tweed and then with Ruslan.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, Mr. Starbird and staff. My name is Doris Tweed, and I'm here on behalf of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast Committee to invite you and all of the community to the 47th Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on March 11th at the Civic Auditorium. We're happy to have former Dodger third baseman Ron Say as our speaker this year. He played for the Dodgers from 1971 to '82 and was part of an all-star infield that included Steve Garvey, Davy Lopes, and Bill Russell. He's going to speak about following your dreams, and we're sure everyone will enjoy the event. Tickets are $20, and parking is free. The breakfast will be catered by Damon's. And we're also looking for corporate sponsorships. We did not even, we fell backwards last year, so we had to dip into our reserves, so if we can get some corporate sponsorships, that would, that would help, so that we don't have to raise the price of the tickets. The doors open at 6:00. The breakfast is served at 6:30, and the program is at 7:00. And for information, you can call 818-437-7960. We hope you can all join us then.
Thank you very much, Doris. Ruslan Braykov.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Mayor and our members, City Council members and the staff. It's very pleasant to be here again, especially because of the, you know, good news. And I'm here because of a few reasons. The reason number one is that our concert series, Positive Motions Concert Series, keeps moving forward, and the next performance, here's a flyer of it, is going to happen next Saturday at the First Baptist Church of Glendale. It's 7:30, and our concert maester of Glendale, Philharmonic Orchestra, is going to lead the group of eight musicians and the piano player in the wonderful program of, you know, Dvorak, Terceto, Brahms, Piano Quintet, and their famous Mendelssohn Octet. Now, the performance starts at 7:30, First Baptist Church of Glendale. Tickets are $15, $20, $25, and $50, and can be purchased online via the phone or at the door. And please visit our website, glendalephilharmonic.com, for more information about it. Now, that's the first item of my speech. The second item is really wonderful news, which we received yesterday. Our foundation and subsequently the Glendale Philharmonic Association got tax-exempt status. We received a letter from IRS, and in the packages which, you know, I just submitted to you, there is, you know, that letter. So now we are open to tax-deductible donations and, you know, sponsorship. Now's the moment when we really can build our donors package, so to speak. So that's, that's another. And there is a third item also. You know, we initially thought to do March 6th concert as a Glendale Philharmonic concert. However, the orchestra got booked for two performances in Hollywood in the month of March, and so one of them, it will happen with Metropolitan Master Choral. It will be happening on Sunday, March 21st and Sunday, March 28th. And the information about those performances will appear on our website, glendalephilharmonic.com, within a few days. And, you know, we just thought that, you know, if we do March 6th as an orchestra performance, then two more performances in Hollywood with different programs might be a little bit too much. That's why we decided that we'll do large, substantial chamber music program for March 6th, and, you know, two more performances of the orchestra with the choral, so, on March 21st and March 28th. Okay. Now, we are working, there are possible, probably, I don't know, we are keeping our fingers crossed. Hopefully, two more bookings will happen for the month of April for the orchestra.
All right, we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I just wanted also to thank the, you know, the City Council members, you know, for your wonderful support and help. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And please come on our performance.
Thank you very much. Okay, and I'm going to recap. The date is March 6th at 7:30 at the First Baptist Church of Glendale, which is at 209 North Louise Street. So March 6th at 7:30, 209 North Louise Street, and that's basically just a block or two from Brand Boulevard. It's gonna be a great concert. They're doing a great job. As you mentioned, they have incorporated, they're a 501(c), and so they're ready for donations and anything else you can do for them. Next.
On the action items, at 8:00, on the agenda at 8:00 is Director of Public Works Regarding Update Report Regarding the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. Place Grant Policies for Livable Active Communities and Environments and Collaboration for the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. At 8:00, one is a motion to note and file a report.
Mr. Mayor, Colin Bogart, our bicycle expert, is making his way up. Guru. Our guru.
I apologize.
Give you his update report.
I'm sorry, Mark. My apologies. A bit of a miscommunication on my part. Okay. Mayor Quintero, council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I am the Place Grant Coordinator for the LA County Bicycle Coalition, and as you know, the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Project is a grant-funded collaboration of the LA County Bicycle Coalition and the city of Glendale to make Glendale a better, safer place to walk and ride a bicycle. The Place Grant has a team of staff members that include staff from the following departments, Public Works Engineering, Public Works Traffic and Transportation, Community Services and Parks, Community Planning, and the Police Department. I'm happy to be here this evening to give you an update on what we've been doing for the past six months, and then tell you a little bit about what we plan on doing for the next six months. And of course, I have PowerPoint slides to help illustrate our activities so far. Since meeting with council in 2009, the team and I have been working on the following. As you recall from all the announcements that I made, we conducted five public input meetings at different locations around the city this past fall. The information that was collected at these meetings will be used for writing the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. We also conducted a citywide pedestrian and bicyclist count in September. We had roughly 85 volunteers counting bicyclists and pedestrians at about 26 different locations citywide, and the information and data collected from that count will be used to help inform the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, and is also available for city staff as a reference document for the future. We funded and completed a policy peer review study of the city's bicycle and pedestrian policies. These include bike and pedestrian policies in Glendale that were reviewed alongside the policies of other cities known for being particularly bike and pedestrian friendly. The report is going to be available for city staff as a reference, and the recommendations from that report will be used to help draft the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. We also participated in the North Glendale Community Plan Advisory Committee meeting on mobility issues, specifically regarding Foothill Boulevard and potential bike options on Foothill Boulevard. We promoted the new sharrows on Grandview Avenue, as you see here in the photo, and distributed sharrow information sheet to help educate the public about this relatively new street marking to Southern California. I have to tell you, I'm very excited about this because Glendale really is one of a very small handful of cities in LA County right now to implement this street marking, so I'm very excited about that. We provided bicycle recommendations for public works, street improvements projects, which included Grandview as well as Foothill and work that's being done on Stalker Street right now. We provided recommendations for proposed bikeways in the Glendale Bicycle Master Plan and for its potential update. More recently, we coordinated a site visit to Long Beach. Long Beach has declared that it seeks to be the most bicycle-friendly city in the country, so we were offered an opportunity to take a tour of, and to see in person what Long Beach has done for bicyclists and pedestrians and what they have planned. We had a small group that went on this tour, including Councilmember Friedman and TPC Commissioner Bill Weissman, and the idea was that it would provide us with some ideas for things that we could potentially do here in Glendale. We also have collaborated with the Community Services and Parks Department, which has agreed to sponsor the 10th Annual Los Angeles River Ride on June 6th, 2010, thanks to the Parks, Community Services and Parks Department sponsorship. 20 bikes are going to be given away to Glendale at-risk youth. Also, and I think this is a very exciting thing too, is that children 12 and under are gonna be able to do this bike ride for free. So we... which included Grandview as well as Foothill and work that's being done on Stalker Street right now. We provided recommendations for proposed bikeways in the Glendale Bicycle Master Plan and for its potential update. More recently, we coordinated a site visit to Long Beach. Long Beach has declared that it seeks to be the most bicycle-friendly city in the country. So we were offered an opportunity to take a tour of, and to see in person what Long Beach has done for bicyclists and pedestrians and what they have planned. We had a small group that went on this tour, including Councilmember Friedman and TPC Commissioner Bill Weissman. And the idea was that it would provide us with some ideas for things that we could potentially do here in Glendale. We also have collaborated with the Community Services and Parks Department, which has agreed to sponsor the 10th Annual Los Angeles River Ride on June 6th, 2010, thanks to the Parks, Community Services and Parks Department sponsorship. Twenty bikes are going to be given away to Glendale at-risk youth. Also, and I think this is a very exciting thing too, is that children twelve and under are going to be able to do this bike ride for free. So we really encourage the community to mark their calendars for June 6th for that reason. City Council and the mayor will be invited to speak at the event if you would like. And I'd also like to mention that the City of Glendale is going to field a five-person team to do the river ride on June 6th. We have also, as part of the last six months, we've developed a proposal for adding a bike ride to the Glendale Downtown Dash. This is going to be on Sunday, March 14th. It'll be, the streets will be closed so people can ride, families can ride with their children on the same route, basically, as the dash that day. We developed a proposal for a bike-related speaker series at the Central Library. We hope this to be part of Bike to Work Day and Bike Month activities. And over the past six months, we've promoted the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, which has included our regular website updates as well as email messages. And we also participated in the Glendale Montrose Christmas Parade. So that pretty much brings you up to date as far as the last six months. I want to tell you very briefly about what we've got coming in the next six months. Most importantly, the next six months, we will be working on drafting the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan itself, which we will ultimately be bringing to you for approval, of course. We expect to be working on this most likely until about June. Once we have a draft plan ready, we intend to set up community feedback meetings, at least two or three probably, and these meetings will be held in the summer, most likely, June or July. As part of the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Project, we have a physical project that is the Riverdale Maple Bike Ped Corridor. And as part of this project, the L.A. County Department of Public Health offers us $20,000 to spend on the physical project. So we plan to spend this money by initiating a tree planting on the Riverdale Maple Corridor. As you can imagine, trees will provide shade for pedestrians and cyclists, it'll make it a more comfortable bicycling and walking environment. And also, trees tend to slow traffic. It has a traffic calming effect as well. We really want this to be a community event. We want the participation of local residents, community organizations, city staff, and we would like to invite you, the council, to participate in this event as well. The date that we have set for the tree planting is April 10th, Saturday, April 10th. There are sixty-five locations along the corridor that we've identified for trees. However, for this community tree planting event, we're looking at roughly ten to twenty trees, and it's going to be in the Maple Park area. And we'll be sending out more information about that soon. We are going, we have been coordinating a second Long Beach site visit. This one is for Friday, March 5th, so it's next week. So far, confirmed participants for this site visit include Mr. McFall, Mr. Zern, Mr. Chapson from the Parks Department. And we also have TPC Commissioners Yakubian and Welch who have expressed interest in attending this. And of course, you are most welcome to participate in this site visit if you'd like. In April, we intend to do a similar site visit. We're coordinating and we're funding a site visit to Berkeley. The visit will be on April 22nd and 23rd. We can take up to six people on this site visit, and you are welcome to join this if you would like. It will be an overnight trip. We've already confirmed the tour with the City of Berkeley staff. We've also confirmed a meeting with the Mayor of Berkeley while we're in town, and it looks like we're likely to get a meeting with officials from the Office of Traffic Safety while we're there as well. As with Long Beach, the intention of this site visit is to see and learn firsthand what Berkeley has done for bicyclists and pedestrians, and to consider how we might bring those ideas back to Glendale and implement them here. We do have Councilmember Friedman confirmed for this already, as well as Officer Gilkerson from the Police Department. And as I said, we have more spaces available if you're interested, and that's going to be on April 22nd and 23rd. We will be organizing and promoting another round of Bike to Work Day and National Bike Month events. We plan to do another set of pit stops on Bike to Work Day, which is May 20th. We also intend to do a number of other events. As I mentioned, we're looking to do a speaker series at the Glendale Public Library, at Central Library. We're also talking about a series of documentary screenings. And at this point in time, we have two history rides planned for May. One is tentatively set for Saturday, May 1st, and the other is set for Saturday, May 22nd. As it turns out, May is also Historic Preservation Month. So what a perfect combination as far as we're concerned. We are going to be coordinating and funding a bicyclist and pedestrian workshop with city staff in the next couple of months. We'll be hosting a set of, a series of webinars for city staff related to bicyclist and pedestrian issues, namely, the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals put these webinars on, and there's a fee for that. We'll be covering that fee and organizing the opportunity for city staff to preview those. We'll be researching pedestrian and bicycle collision records from the past five years. Our hope with this is that the data we can compile and analyze will help us in drafting the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, and will also serve as a reference document for city staff for use with other documents and projects. We will be collecting bicyclist and pedestrian surveys online. The survey is actually already up and running. You can get to it from the Safe and Healthy Streets website, which is la-bike.org/Glendale. The idea behind this is that we can collect additional detailed data that we were not able to collect in our community meetings last fall. As I've mentioned before, we'll be supporting the Glendale Downtown Dash Family Fund Bike Ride again March 14th. And we do intend to organize some additional bike rides and walks somewhere in there, to be determined. In closing, I just want to say that the Safe and Healthy Streets Project continues to be a great team effort, and we hope that you and the community are pleased with the work that we've done to date. And at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have some.
Well, let me start by saying I think we're very, very pleased in what a good job you're doing, how hard you're working. I know Mr. Stardevan is also committed, and everyone at Parks and Rec and the city, the entire city, so very good job, Mr. Bogart.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Najarian?
I have a couple of comments. I was, I was at a U.S. Department of Transportation meeting on Friday. They're going around and getting some community outreach and trying to decide how they're going to put the funding into different available modes for their safety transportation plan. And there was a couple, I think a couple of comments, a couple of questions came out that, "Oh, you folks aren't doing enough for bicycle. We don't want to hear about highways, or light rail, or subways. We want to hear about bicycles. What are you doing for bicycles?" And I said, "As a matter of fact, we've got our own Colin Bogart from the L.A. Bicycle Coalition embedded in our Parks and Rec Department." And every opportunity he has, he's promoting bicycling as a means of health and transit and fun. So I was immediately corrected afterwards. The lady from the L.A. County Public Health Department came up and said, "We're the ones who are putting Colin in here." But it's, it's great. It's very great that you're doing that, Colin. Couple points. We have an old master bike plan. It's got to be at least twenty years old now in the City of Glendale. I hope that Steve, your department is working with Colin and maybe dusting that off and sending it to the TPC for review and updating and implementation as best we can.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, we certainly are. And it's a good document to have, and it provides us an opportunity to apply for grants. But at least from a Public Works perspective, we don't always like to plan a lot, we like to do. So don't be mistaken that nothing is happening because we don't have the plan updated. Colin just showed you, we are doing. And every chance we get doing more to facilitate bicyclists in the city. So we won't let that stop us. We will, hopefully by this summer, have that plan updated, at least in a draft form to begin, as you said, to go through the various commissions and bring it back to the council. But that is not going to stop us from pursuing these facilities.
And please, I find myself repeating this to many different department heads, mainly it's to you, though. Let's have, let's have some projects ready to go, ready to pull off our shelf in the event that there is an influx of either stimulus money or funding, whether it's from the federal government, the state, or even the MTA. We have our call for projects every few years, and I know Burbank took advantage of, is it their Chandler Bikeway? Maybe I've got the road wrong, but they got a good chunk of change for some bikeway improvements in their city. So let's have these, I know you like to do, but sometimes you have to have something on the shelf and say, "Oh, you need, you know, something for, you know, children's bicycling," or whatever. We've got it right here, dusted off, and present it for your grant or your funding request. And you'd be surprised, well, I know you wouldn't be surprised, but folks at home would be surprised how often funding is available for these projects, or otherwise there was no previous funding. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Speaking of doing, Mr. Zern, I forwarded an email. The person was interested in bike racks up in Montrose, and sure enough, Mr. Zern had already moved on that and was putting, which is going to be great, they can actually lock the bikes up, both employees and shoppers, and then walk around the Montrose Shopping Park. Mr. Draymond?
By the way, on that note of the bicycle racks in Montrose, it's the City Council, after all, so we have to add a note of controversy. Mr. Zern, part of the controversy is where those racks are going to go, because the desire had been by some to take up public parking, on-street parking, to put in bike corrals. And there is not the support from the merchants to do that. Instead, the support is for bike racks on the open spaces adjacent to the, in other words, the public right-of-way, but adjacent to the popular places the bicyclists seem to be congregating, the bakeries and the eating establishments and so on. Also said they are close enough so that those folks that are taking a break from their cycling can actually sit and be proximal to their bikes rather than out beyond the landscaped area in the street and losing the on-street, the actual on-street parking. So, and the reason I know that is because I was asked to participate in a discussion on that.
Yes, Mr. Draymond, we are working with the Shopping Park Association in that effort. We're also working on a corral, potentially Pilot Corral on Brand.
Pilot Corral?
We're working with the merchants along Brand to see where that might best be put. Colin showed you, just interestingly, a snap of Long Beach where they do a little bit of public art with the bike racks. The bike racks come in coffee cup shape, or a pizza slice shape, or a muffin, or a donut, that are put then in front of establishments like bakeries and pizza places to add a little bit of aesthetic to, other than just a standard bike rack. So we're looking at those as well.
Okay, thank you. I have two speaker cards. Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I have to tell you, yes, I rode a bike many years ago. One of the great joys of my life was to go down to the beach and ride it all the way. You could go all the way from Malibu down to Venice. I don't know if you can still do it, but I loved doing it. And when I wasn't doing that, I loved to jog along the ocean. It was wonderful. It was just such a wonderful experience. And one of my favorite things, of course, was jogging over Adam's Hill. And that brings me back to the thought that we need to curtail bike riders on the sidewalk where pedestrians are. I believe there is a law against riding your bikes on the sidewalk. We have a lot of seniors that walk, and I've been to this before. They're subject to, that if they get knocked down and get their bones broken, it can lead to very long-time curtailment of their activities. I'm not sure how to do that, but I still see them. And they're not kids that are doing it. The wonderful thing was last Thursday, we had a terrific meeting over at the Edison Community Room, and there were at least sixty people that went there for that river walk, a good lot of it. We broke up into different groups, had our say about what bicycles, what the equestrians and pedestrians and families having tables there and so forth, what could be done, and it was terrific. It was such energy and vitality from people from all over the city, not just from the people in that area over there along the river walk, or in that area, but from all over the city. We're very enthusiastic, and what it could bring to the city in the way of, you know, people coming to the city, enjoying our restaurants and so forth, if there are time for them to do that, aside from doing the river walk. But it is terrific. Thank you.
Mike Mohill?
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. This is a very good project, the bicycle thing. What I'm concerned about is the people who live south of the 134 freeway. There's about 20,000 immigrants, according to Mr. Najarian, who really do not get involved with the city process, the political process especially. And I hope we do an outreach to these citizens, they pay taxes here, and let them know about this bicycle thing. You know, I've spoken with some of them quite often, actually. They don't know English. They don't know what's going on in the city. Most of them are just ignorant, unfortunately, but they're here. And that's just one part of South Glendale. And I would like to see us make an outreach to these citizens south of the 134 freeway, and let them know that their taxes are being used, and that everybody is going to be included in this bicycle thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to file if there's no other comments.
Move 981.
Second. Who calls?
I mean, 8A1.
8A1. Motion was made and seconded. Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Hi. I would like to just quickly open up the oral communications presentation. There's a gentleman, Steve Starleif.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, staff, and members of the community. Yes, and thanks for fitting me in. My name is Steve Starleif. I'm a resident of Glendale. And I'm actually speaking tonight on behalf of the Salem Lutheran School. And I would just want to make a quick announcement that on March 28th, we're going to be having a community feast at Salem Lutheran School. It's open to the community with emphasis on the homeless population, and our goal is to teach our kids at Salem Lutheran how to think and serve other people in the community. And I just want to let everybody know out there that it's a community event. Everybody is welcome if they'd like to come and pitch in or be a part of it in any way. That'd be fantastic. And they can call Salem Lutheran Church and School and give us a call. And as I said, my name is Steve Starleif, and we'd love to work with anybody out there. This is our third event. We had a Thanksgiving feast. It was covered in the Glendale news press. It was attended by about 130 individuals. Then we had a Christmas feast as well, which we had about 175, close to 200 individuals. And at this event, we're going to be giving away clothing for kids and adults, and toys for kids. There's no charge, and we kind of do it with angels amongst the community and in the school. So again, I'm going to come back, hopefully, next week, you know, as we get closer to the event. And thanks for squeezing me out, I really appreciate it.
Give us the, whatever you need, phone number, or you repeat the dates.
Oh, sure. Salem Lutheran is 818-243-8264. And the event is on March 28th at 1:00. March 28th at 1:00 at Salem Lutheran School. Thank you very much.
All right. We have, we're going to have a very long hearing on the smoking ordinance, non-smoking ordinance, the Glendale Fresh Air Ordinance. So why don't we move a couple of things? There are people that are waiting in the audience. So let's move, let's start with 8D. Let's move 8D up. Would you read 8D into the record?
8D is Director of Community Planning Regarding 2010 Census Outreach Update and Supplemental Funding Request. At 8D-1's resolution appropriating $10,000 in additional funding to promote the 2010 census.
Mr. Starbury?
Yes, I'll go to Jeff Hamilton, Senior Planner. Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city has been working on promoting the census since early in 2009, and in earnest with a public committee since November. The committee has been broken out into various sub- The committee has been broken out into various subcommittees, including an Armenian Subcommittee, Filipino-Latino Subcommittee, Community Service Groups, Schools, Merchants, and City Staff. The committee, the subcommittees have been all working to try to come up with ways to promote the census. We've already done quite a lot of, made quite a lot of progress, including having posters put out on the bus benches. We've got flyers that have gone out to many locations, and we've got proposals in hand to do advertising with newspapers and various other media outlets. We have so far expended about $9,500 of the $27,000 originally allocated, and of the ideas put forward by the various subcommittees, which are not yet funded, total roughly $20,000. So that would leave us short by at least $2,700 if we attempted to fund all those efforts. All the subcommittees really do believe that these efforts are important and valuable, especially to reach out to the Armenian media and the Korean media, but the, especially the television advertising that is required is rather expensive. So to fund these ideas and to ensure that there's adequate funding in place through the end of the outreach effort, we respectfully request that an additional $10,000 be allocated towards the 2010 Census Outreach Effort. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
And a motion? Move 8D1.
Do we have, do we have a source for this? It'd be General Fund Reserve. And let me, let me add to Jeff's comments. I'm not sure there's any activity we're currently undertaking that is quite as important in the long run as trying to get a good accurate count on the census. These funds could be returned multiples of times in the course of the next 10 years if we get a, an accurate count in terms of federal funds and state funds. So there, this, this activity is very important. This seems like a wise investment, so we'd recommend the funds come from the General Fund Reserve.
I forgot to mention that we did apply just this morning to a, with a grant application to LA County. They've got funds available to cities like Glendale to fund outreach efforts like this. If those funds come through, then we won't need to expend nearly all the money that you've, that you might be wishing to allocate to us tonight.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Hamilton, first of all, thank you for lending your expertise and your time to this. You've done it before, and so thank you. I was just curious about these funds and the media buy that you're talking about and so on, and when, assuming that these funds that, in the motion, that are mentioned in the motion are approved, at some point, are we going to get to see as a City Council how these funds are being spent before they're spent on these media buys?
I can, I can provide you with my working spreadsheet that outlines what we've already spent money on and what the proposals are. I can provide you with examples, with the example of the newspaper ad and the various other things that we've put together. I've given you examples of some of those in your packet. What is your preference?
Well, I'd like to see some estimation of how you're going to spend it. In other words, you've mentioned two, two, what you've described, or someone has described as immigrant populations. I also want to know some of the other non-English, traditionally non-English speaking language groups within the city, and how we're planning to reach out to them.
We are still working.
How this money is being divided up.
Right.
In other words, to, where are we buying, where are we buying these, the, whether it's television or print or whatever? How are we spending it?
We've had two philosophies as a city subcommittee and, well, as a larger subcommittee. First, not to duplicate the efforts that might be undertaken by the Census Bureau themselves. So if they're spending money at a particular media outlet or in a particular way, it doesn't make any sense for the city to be spending money on exactly the same outlet necessarily. The second thing is, if the, if the idea is worthy and, or has merit, we don't really even evaluate the worthiness. If, if a subcommittee, like the Armenian Subcommittee or the Hispanic Subcommittee proposes an idea, and we put it to the larger committee, and they say, yeah, that's a good idea, then we, then we're trying to support it and trying to fund it, trying to find ways to fund it. Some of the subcommittees have been a little bit more proactive at producing those, and we're still working with some of the subcommittees to formulate their ideas and actually get some details and get an invoice that we could actually, that we can actually fund. So that's, that's where we stand right now. Where some of the subcommittees have, have put together ideas, and some of the subcommittees were still working with them.
Okay, well, I'd like to have more details, quite frankly, because it seems somewhat sketchy at the moment. So the idea of going into media and some people are deciding they're going to do this, other people are deciding to do something else. I'd like, you mentioned some of the possibilities in terms of, from newspaper ads to the radio buys or TV buys, so I think the City Council needs to, to see what some of the expenditures are to date, but also what you have in the future, in the next couple of weeks.
I can just give you a few examples.
Well, you don't have to give them to us.
No, you don't, you don't want that right now?
No, no, you have to give it to us right now, but just in printed form, let's, let's let us take a look at, at what it is that you're doing and how you're going about doing it.
I'll make a copy and get it to you tomorrow.
Right, what the subcommittees are spending the money on, or what they propose to do. I think that's.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
There is a motion. It's a waiting second.
A second, okay. Without any further comments, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay, one other quick item, and that would be 9A. Please read 9A.
9A is a hearing at 9A's Fire Chief Regarding 2010 Annual Weed Abatement Program. At 9A1 is motion approving abatement order and directing the Agricultural Commissioner, Director of Weights and Measures to abate the nuisance on each declared parcel.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an annual program. This is getting to be about the last step in the process, which is actually ordering the work after all the various notices have been sent to the numerous property owners on whose property weeds need to be abated. Staff is here from both LA County and the Fire Department to answer any questions if you have them. This is a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. Someone want to make a motion?
Close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing. Does someone want to?
I'll move 9A1.
Second.
Okay, and let me get on my high horse once again and say, as someone whose beautiful hillside is just completely green, it's about this high, and with the rains this weekend, it'll be even higher. It's going to stay green and beautiful maybe a month, and then after that, it's going to be totally dry like all of my neighbors, and so we have to get it cut, whether you do it yourself. I've been roaming Home Depot, looking at new weed whackers, and I normally call the GYA and then do some of the work myself. But whatever it is, I mean, remember those fires that took place last year, and now with all the rains, it's gonna, we have the potential here in Glendale. So let's hope everyone gets with the program. The Fire Department does a great job of notifying, and, and then we'll be out enforcing. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Okay. 8B.
At 8B. Okay. 8B is Director of Community Planning Regarding Year-One Update on City Efforts to Limit Exposure to Secondhand Tobacco Smoke. At 8B1 is Presentation of Certificates, Glendale Fresh Air Zone, Certificates to Four Businesses That Are 100% Smoke-Free. At 8P2 is an Ordinance for Introduction Amending the Glendale Municipal Code, Chapter 8.52, Relating to the Restrictions on Smoking and Tobacco Use in Public Places. And at 8B3 is a Resolution Appropriating $60,500.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, I'll go to Director of Community Planning, Mr. Hargani.
I'm going to ask Sam Engels to introduce this topic, and I believe the City Attorney will have a piece of the presentation as well.
Okay. Thanks. Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council, Sam Engel, Neighborhood Services Administrator. Tonight's report was initially scheduled for several different purposes. First and most important, we wanted to present you with an update of our city's efforts over the past 14 months as we have implemented, implemented our program to limit exposure by our residents to secondhand tobacco smoke. Early on, everyone, but especially staff in the City Council, as we worked through this, realized that this would be a significant undertaking, and that much effort by staff, City Council, and in particular, the community, has gone into making this work. I'm very pleased to report to you tonight, as we reported to you in your written staff report, that we've made significant progress this past year towards meeting our goal of making our public and living spaces in this city smoke-free, and that we also have much more work in front of us. This past January, the American Lung Association honored Glendale with a letter grade of A, recognizing our city's efforts to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke. This is a tremendous accomplishment, and everyone should be proud of it, and it should not be diminished by those who might suggest that we have not gone far enough. The approach that we, that is, city staff and you as the City Council, have undertaken together was one that was not a unilateral ban on smoking within our city, but one that was reasonable and workable in a community such as ours that would result in reductions to exposure to secondhand smoke. I have to tell you that that strategy has paid off. Because of this approach, there is an element of our effort that is not readily apparent to you or to the public generally, and that is the degree to which Glendale, over the past year, has become viewed as the leader to address the problem of secondhand smoke by other communities that have similar demographics to ours and face the same daily realities that we all face here in our community. Our ordinance that we adopted over many work sessions is comprehensive, and the implementation strategy that accompanies it, then these both serve as models for other cities, and both Stephen Kosis, who's the analyst you met originally, and Mike Grant from the City Attorney's Office are frequently consulted by other cities seeking to do the same thing that you undertook as our City Council. When we speak with them, we routinely credit our community and you as City Council for the interest and the deep thought that have gone into the idea of a reasonable ordinance in combination with a very strategic implementation strategy that results in the reducing the exposure of non-smokers to secondhand tobacco smoke. The implementation strategy was developed to ensure that we get the word out of these new requirements. The original strategy included several key components, such as the use of an outreach ambassador, which quite honestly, we copied from Burbank, in conjunction with enforcement officers and an educational campaign utilizing various different types of media. All these efforts have been listed in your staff report, and we feel that they've produced the outcomes that were originally projected. Part of the campaign is to recognize those businesses that have adopted the city's goal of reducing exposure to secondhand smoke by designating their establishments to be smoke-free, and we routinely do this every single month by handing the certificates out, and that's one of the functions that our outreach ambassador does. Tonight, as a part of our report, we'll recognize, I think four of them are here tonight, and I'll read off four more names of people that have determined themselves to be smoke-free. Other parts of the outreach campaign have included street banners, public service announcements, movie theater ads, newspaper display ads, to the point that the Fresh Air blue logo, blue logo now appears all over town. I would have to say that perhaps the most effective tool has been the use of the Fresh Air Ambassador, our staff person who really does all of the face-to-face contacts, the meet-and-greets with business owners, apartment managers, tenants, persons who smoke, and just about anyone else who has a question about these requirements that we've undertaken. I would like to introduce you to, I'd like to introduce her to you right now as a person who's done a yeoman's job this past year, and her name is Ms. Arminé Jimenez. Arminé? Because this personal effort has been so effective, as our part of our presentation and our report tonight, we'll ask you to consider funding that one particular part of our outreach effort for one more year. As we are talking about community education, I'd like to show you a couple of entries that have come in in our annual poster, our annual Neighborhood Pride poster contest that's going on right now. I'd like you to take a close look at these entries and note the "No Smoking" logo that appears on these, on each poster. Even though this was not a part of the theme or the accompanying curriculum that went out with the poster contest, this just shows that the word is indeed getting out in our community, at least through the youth that participate. Even with that, as our staff has pointed out, there are still some significant issues that confront us. The accompanying ordinance with the staff report tonight contains some revisions that are needed to improve our efforts. These revisions are either housekeeping-type changes, changes about which City Council has already provided direction to staff, or those that correct problems in the original ordinance that were not intended by City Council and staff when we wrote it. The most significant of these changes is a codified requirement to separate smoking-permitted units from non-smoking units in apartment buildings. This change is in response to direction from City Council at the last review session. As a part of our preparations, staff met with a cross-section of property owners to review this requirement. Staff was surprised when the owners expressed a preference for an absolute ban on smoking in apartment units rather than implementation of a requirement for separation. Many of the owners had already implemented a policy of non-smoking buildings that they were developing as tenants turned over. I will point out that even with their feedback, staff did not feel that that was a workable option in this community, and we're recommending that there be no codified requirement for absolute prohibition of smoking units in apartment buildings, and leave the smoke-free decision up to the property owner, and stick with the requirement that the smoking units be separated from the non-smoking units. As a part of the decision in front of you tonight, we are requesting the council make some sort of determination of the percentage of smoking-permitted units and include this in the ordinance. It's one of the decision issues in front of you. A second part of the revision is the requirement that, that there be a map that shows the location of the smoking and non-smoking units in apartment buildings. I will point out to you that we already require a map in apartment buildings as a part of our Building and Safety Code, and that requirement's been in place for over 15 years. The change in front of you tonight is only to use the existing map and use that to show where the smoking-designated units would be as opposed to the smoking-prohibited units. The staff report also outlined for use enforcement efforts to date and highlighted a particular problem. This is the requirement that a warning be provided before its citation can be issued, and it's proven to be a barrier towards issuing citations, in particular, to the most egregious violators. The original intent of this requirement was well-taken, and that was to ensure that the public was adequately educated before we actually cited them. And I think that was an admirable intention, and I think it served us well during the first year. As we've needed to ramp up enforcement, as we've heard feedback is needed, it's actually become somewhat of an impediment. After 14 months of enforcement, and now that our outreach has been done to the degree that it has at this point, this ordinance now includes staff's recommendation that the warning requirement be eliminated and that citations be simply issued for smoking in a place where smoking is otherwise prohibited. In particular, this will help with enforcement in the parks and playgrounds. The original strategy adopted by the City Council included the park rangers handling all enforcement for the smoking ordinance in the city's park facilities. If you will recall, shortly thereafter, enforcement authority was taken away from park rangers. With the elimination of their enforcement responsibilities from their job duties, enforcement efforts at the park facilities have fallen to police officers and the code enforcement staff solely, who would have to be regularly stationed at the parks to know who had received prior warnings. Now a citation can be written for the simple crime of smoking in the tot lot. I know that from taking phone calls that this will be a, that this will be welcome news to many people watching tonight, as this is a significant problem that I'm sure you guys hear about all the time. This will also improve enforcement at the different business districts, another area where we get complaints about enforcement. An interesting oversight in the original ordinance, which all of us missed, was a requirement to post "No Smoking" signs in areas where smoking is prohibited, and with all the effort that we all spent, the one thing that's probably patently most obvious got left out of our ordinance, and we're requesting that that be put in with the revisions tonight. Finally, the proposed revisions include language that staff thought addressed the issues that had come up with religious practices previously discussed by City Council. The City Attorney will assist with this discussion, and staff is requesting further direction with regard to this issue. Last but not least, there are several remaining issues which staff is requesting direction on for the next round of updates. First, should the city, should the city regulate smoking on the balconies or private patios of apartments? As noted in the staff report, this continues to be an area of concern for residents of our community. This issue would be significantly mitigated if you ultimately adopt a requirement for clustering and separation of smoking units from non-smoking units, but it doesn't go away entirely. But the larger issue remains, since this is a large source of secondhand smoke, affecting people who may be limited in their ability to mitigate it by either moving or relocating. Second, and this issue has also come to your attention fairly regularly, the issue of condominiums continues to come up. Previously, the City Council did Previously, the city council determined to let the various homeowners' associations decide for themselves. Residents have advised us that the homeowners' associations are seemingly powerless to address the issue and are asking for city intervention with this one area. Again, we're asking for direction from you tonight on how to proceed with the next revision. Third, the issue of smoking at religious facilities continues to be a matter of discussion. At one point, council referred to houses of worship as being exempt. At other times, council has indicated that the religious ceremonies and the activities at the location are exempt. Because of confusion on the part of staff and on the part of the public, there's been no enforcement of any of these provisions, and staff is actually seeking direction from you on this question tonight. As I mentioned before, the city attorney will discuss this more fully. As we get ready to go into your discussions, I'd like to conclude by saying that our very specific strategy of implementing a program and periodically reviewing the components of that program that make it work has been very effective at making this ordinance work in this community, especially with, with it being as potentially contentious as it could be. Over time, we've worked to ease into this, with I think some people being a little frustrated occasionally, but putting our efforts into education rather than into punitive action, while staying focused on the overall goal of reducing over time the exposure of our residents to secondhand smoke. We recognize that this is an effort that most in our community readily endorse, but also is one that is difficult because it deals, as we've discussed before, with an addictive behavior and a sense of community etiquette. We've had some significant accomplishments, and I have to tell you, we're quite proud of those, but we recognize that we have a way to go on several different fronts, issues that are in front of you tonight. On behalf of all of us on the staff that have worked on this, I have to say this from my heart, we appreciate your support on this difficult issue, as well as your patience as we have dealt with each of these issues to build and develop our program over the past year. As you get ready to go into this night, into this tonight, we're ready to answer your questions and provide assistance as we can.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff at this point?
Not now.
Okay, then I will go to the speakers. Is there?
It's really only to address the issue that Mr. Engel mentioned, and that is this interplay between state and local law and what our ordinance currently does and how that, depending on whether it's changed, how that might impact the establishment, and specifically, church bingo games is what really the focus is. Currently, the ordinance prohibits smoking at bingo games, regardless of where they're located. Certainly, this council can change that, as staff has indicated in the past, we can draft and, and adopt ordinances that are more restrictive than state law restrictions. State law currently prohibits smoking in places of employment, Labor Code 6404.5. In 1998, there was a legislative council opinion that indicated if an establishment was staffed fully by volunteers, that that was, that was not a place of employment, and as such, smoking, it wouldn't be a violation of state law to, to smoke. There's been some contrary views expressed by attorney generals and others, but nonetheless, based upon that legislative council's opinion, the, our office in 1999 indicated that, specifically with regard to St. Mary's Arminian Apostolic Church, that they were permitted to, or at least, they would not be prosecuted under that state law provision for permitting smoking at bingo games. Currently, under our ordinance, as I noted, smoking is prohibited. If the council were to lift that prohibition under local law, there would still be this issue of state law that the church would have to grapple with, but we would no longer be involved in that, considering that it would be essentially council's wish to take a hands-off approach to smoking at bingo games.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Howard. Is there anyone else who wants to speak on this issue? Turn in your cards.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Ngerian.
Just in terms of what we're going to be doing tonight, there's several components. I see there's a bunch of plaques here that presumably don't need any discussion, this is just honoring the certain businesses who are cooperating. And then, then there's the apartment issue, and the condominium issue, and the houses of worship issue, essentially. Is there more than?
The warning issues, the signs.
Enforcement issue.
Enforcement issue.
Is there a, is there a efficient way to sort of go through all these?
Yeah, I plan to, after we hear from the public, then we'll have our discussion, ask questions, et cetera, and then we're going to take them one by one so that we can separate all the different issues.
Mr. Mayor, do you maybe want to do the business presentations for the businesses that are here?
Sure, yeah, that's going to be a long, it'll be a long evening, so let's go ahead and do that.
Then go back to the businesses.
But anyway, in answer to Mr. Ngerian's question, so we'll take them one by one and take our votes on the individual items and go on from there. Mr. Engel.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, one of the nice parts about doing this is the positive part of recognition. It's the counterpoint, I think, to the difficult discussions we've all gone through with doing this. One of the things that we've done in, in recognizing, and was part of the original outreach strategy that you, that you approved, was making sure that we recognized those businesses that were operating, operating within your philosophy of reducing the exposure to secondhand smoke through the way they conducted their business. And so we routinely present these fresh air certificates as a matter of course each month. We have eight businesses that would be recognized this month, three of which are here tonight, and I'd like to bring them up so that you can see them tonight. When I say businesses, they fall in a lot of different categories, and you'll see that tonight, that we have three apartment buildings, but I want to read off the eight that are up here that are on our, the other five that are on our list. First off, Casa de Ramos Restaurant on Glen Oaks has been smoke-free for, prior to the adoption of our ordinance, and we're very pleased to receive this tonight, or receiving this. La Petite Cafe, the apartments at 371 West Lexington, the apartments at 1708 East Glen Oaks, and a chain restaurant that's located in Glendale that's been here for a long time is leading their chain actually with this effort, and that's Acapulco on Pacific, has said, "This is something that we feel we need to do and actually be an example." Those are the five that aren't here tonight, and coming up tonight to receive their plaques are 214 East Dryden Apartments. STURPA Real Estate Management Services have undertaken to make all of their buildings smoke-free over time, but they have numerous ones now. And last but not least, a person that you recognize, but also one who's, who has had had a smoke-free apartment building for many years, and that's 614 Louise Street. Who's that? Here we go.
You're going to get a photo. Hold your flag, turn your flag around.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for the STURPA management person, if you don't mind, because I know it's, it's a management company, fairly good size. So do you actually advertise "non-smoker" when you put your ads in the paper, internet, whatever?
We haven't been doing that, but the ones that we already have managed are, we have changed over to "non-smoking."
Right, but I mean, in terms of your tenant selection, how do you?
On the leases themselves, we tell them they can't smoke.
So ahead of time?
At that point.
Is that difficult to enforce?
Not at all, really.
I think there's a lot of apartment owners out there who are maybe, "Oh, my gosh, what if I do this, they're going to revolt."
Really, we haven't lost one tenant because of this. Everybody's been very cooperative.
Just right up front, you say it's a non-smoking building and...
That's it, really. Thank you for all your help, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the speaker cards. I'll give you three minutes each, but you don't have to take up all of the time. If someone has made the point for you, then, then you can make a brief comment. We'll start with Margaret Hammond, followed by Ann Howell.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council, staff, and audience, my friends around the city. My name is Margaret Hammond. I am and have been here 50 years, and I am a great advocate of non-smoking facilities. I believe that I am entitled to be able to breathe clean air and, you know, and share my space. And under state law, if smoking is allowed in apartments, owners can be sued by tenants who have a health problem for allowing smoking on the property that causes breeding and health problems. It was one of the reasons several years ago that I started looking into this as to having apartments and my own home smoke-free. I, I believe it's a good reason to not allow smoking, especially when there are children and young people that are involved in it, and so therefore that I really have always felt it was, we are entitled to our right to not have to breathe smoke when we go to a restaurant or in the parks or so forth. So I do thank you for this ordinance and for looking into further actions that will continue this no smoking. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Howell, followed by Harvey Pearson.
Honorable counsel, mayor, I'm Ann Howell. I live at Windsor Manor Retirement Facility at 1230 East Windsor Road. I'd like to thank you also for the ordinance. I'd like to thank the staff for the excellent job they did in writing the ordinance. I spent my career writing ordinances for the city of L.A., and I think this is an excellently-written ordinance. I'm here tonight to ask you to please remove the provision that offers a warning to smokers. Windsor Manor is a non-smoking facility. We're across from a park that's a non-smoking park. We're across from a school that's non-smoking. We adjoin a church that's non-smoking, and yet we are plagued by a group of about eight young men who continually come and smoke beneath our windows right in front of the "No Smoking" signs. The police come out, they warn them if, if they see them smoking, because if they see the black and white, the kids throw the, the young men throw the cigarettes in the bushes, but they warn them. The police sometimes ask them to leave. If they don't ask them to leave and the police leave, very often the guys just light up again. They sometimes have an unmarked car that comes out and cites these guys for smoking marijuana. I've yet to hear an officer cite them for smoking per se. So please remove the provision of warning relative to this ordinance, and thank you again for the ordinance.
Thank you. Harvey Pearson, followed by Serge Lazar.
Harvey Pearson, counsel, city council, and I just want to suggest that ladies and gentlemen, just folks, you could maybe be helping L.A. write an ordinance like Glendale's leading the way on one of these days. That would be a, a fitting situation. And having gone through years and years and years of secondhand smoke in an apartment upstairs, I'm for the toughest you can make it, is all, is all I can say. If it works with 70 to 80% of non-smoking units, that would be great. 50% would work, fine, but I think the 70 to 80% would be even better. And warnings have not worked evidently in Glendale, and so it's time to start issuing some tickets, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Serge Lazar, followed by Wes Rudeman.
Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Serge Lazar, and I moved to Glendale about a year ago. I live on the corner of Adams and Wilson, across the street from Wilson Mini Park. I can never use, I can never go to Wilson Mini Park because everyone smokes around there. I want to tell you about the National Cancer Institute fact sheet about secondhand smoke. Arsenic, a heavy metal toxin. Benzene, a chemical found in gasoline. Beryllium, a toxic metal. Cadmium, a metal used in batteries. Chromium, a metallic element. Ethylene oxide, a chemical used to sterilize medical devices. Nickel, a metallic element. Polonium-210, a chemical element that gives off radiation. And vinyl chloride, a toxic substance used in plastic manufacturing. I'm very happy to live in the city of Glendale. I walk everywhere. I walk to the post office, I walk to Trader Joe's, I walk to B of A, to Staples, to the stores, and along the way, every other person, not always, but almost daily, when I walk, I have to follow someone who's smoking, or I cross paths with someone who's smoking. And when I come to an intersection such as Adams and Broadway, there will be someone next to me or on the other side, smoking. It's a plague, it's an epidemic. Legislation will not cause these people to quit smoking, but there's something better than that, and that's education. I propose, because I only have three minutes, I'm reducing the amount of research that I had done about this, but I will tell you what I think will probably work. You have the authority to impose a $2.50 special tax on a pack of cigarette. Out of the 207,000 residents of Glendale, if we assume that 10% smoke, that's 20,000 people, let's assume half a pack a day, times $2.50, times 30 days, that will be $750,000 revenue for the city to be placed in a special fund so that education, mailers, not, not issuing tickets, but education, that these elements, toxic, you're killing yourself, and secondhand smoke, there are many people who are contemptuously smoking.
Stop it up.
May I continue?
Right, just, no, but just finish it up.
Yes, I will finish right now. Who are smoking in front of their children, innocent animals, or seniors. So the suggestion is to educate people.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lazar. Thank you. Just a side note. Mr. Howard.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hold on.
Oh, excuse me.
City's levy tax.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in the past, they could, but I believe these states suspended our ability to do that and preempted us.
Okay, all right. Wes Rudeman, followed by Marilyn Gunnell.
Wes Rudeman, good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Just to touch on that, I believe the city of San Francisco is actually trying to impose a tax on cigarettes to abate the cost of all the litter cleanup, so I'm not sure if it's framed that way, it might be possible, but something to look into. I'd like to thank you for considering this issue tonight. I serve as the director of community programs for Day One. We're a local nonprofit based out of Pasadena, and we work with prevention programming, and we field calls regularly from people who are dealing with this in their homes, especially when people with asthma call me, or if they have young children and they live in an apartment. It breaks my heart, but I really can't do anything for them in Pasadena. We don't even have disclosure in Pasadena, so at least people here now, when they move in, they have an idea of what they're getting themselves into. However, since you have moved on this, other cities have taken note of that, and I wanted to give you a brief update because these are cities I work in closely and have, have witnessed this firsthand. One is South Pasadena, just a week and a half ago, actually, they unanimously directed staff to, to come back with a draft and ordinance that would require disclosure, the grouping of smoking and non-smoking units, and this would cover every residential building, two units or more. It would also, they have, or directed staff to come back with something on the order of 75 to 80% of all apartment units be smoke-free, and that would be phased in, as well as buffer zones, so between the smoking units and non-smoking buildings where that's permitted, so on, adjacent balconies and patios. And this is something too, we've, I've heard firsthand from people like condo residents who, you know, buy a place and then a year later they happen to move, someone moves in under them, and they always smoke. They don't want to smoke in their apartment, so they smoke outside and it drifts in to their upstairs unit. The South Pass ordinance would also require signage, as well as smoke-free culminations. The South Pass ordinance would also require signage, as well as smoke-free common areas, and declare secondhand smoke to be a nuisance. And this gives, you know, both condo and apartment residents some sort of recourse if they are being impacted directly, that they, they can, they have a lot more power than they currently do to do something about that. Finally, they also have directed staff to come back with an ordinance that will include condominiums, and that would include the common areas as well as the disclosure requirement, so to give condo, because several condo owners have spoken as well, and the ones we've worked with, it's incredibly difficult to get the HOAs to move on this. They don't know what to do, and with ownership issues and whatnot. So a lot of them are kind of waiting on direction for this. I'm also really happy to report that Pasadena is going to be considering this. It's set to go before the Public Safety Committee this coming Monday, so. And, yeah, we're certainly hoping that they will take heed of any steps you happen to take in the near future, as well as what South Pasadena has chosen to do. And that's it. I'd like to thank you again.
Much. Marilyn Gonnell, followed by Arnold Milner.
Thank you, and good evening to all. I'm Marilyn Gonnell, a 38-year member of the populace of the city of Glendale. And I love it, and we live in it, and we enjoy it. And as a member of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale, our committee is very concerned with the issue of the smoking, secondhand smoke, and all of the smoke. The issue of the condominiums, where people are smoking outside, one of my daughters has an asthmatic child, and the people have moved subsequently, but they were living downstairs, smoking out in their patio, and the smoke was coming in. And even in the heat of the summer, they had to keep their patio door closed so that that stench would not rise into their residence. I also want to speak on the issue of Arminay. She is the queen of dealing with this issue of smoking. She is articulate, she is kind, she is bright, and she needs to be kept on and on, because she is dealing with people who are in businesses, people who are getting complaints lodged against them by the population, and doing it in such a manner that she does not rile people up. And I have enjoyed working with her. And as a member of the committee, again, I am always on the lookout for people who are doing the wrong thing. And the wrong thing is smoking. Smoking in doorways, so people have to walk through the smoke to get into the restaurant, to the store, to the whatever. And I call Arminay, she says, okay, we're gonna go out, we're gonna deal with it. And so I want to speak in favor of keeping her on. And that's all I'm gonna say, and I'm gonna quit before my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gonnell. Arnold Milner, followed by Marlene Gomez.
Good evening, members of the community, people sitting on the dais here. My name is Arnold Milner. I'm a citizen of Glendale, on the Clean and Beautiful Committee for many years. And without repeating everything that has been said, I can talk about my neighborhood. I've noticed that in over a period of time, there used to be a lot of cigarette butts on the street, on the sidewalks. Also, people walking up and down the street, not only from our neighborhoods, but from distant areas, were smoking. In recent times, and in particularly the last few weeks, this has been reduced quite a bit. You can walk along the street, look in the street, on the curb and so forth, and not see cigarette butts, or you might see one or two, but will not see cigarette butts like before. Also, the, excuse me, the people walking by that were smoking, and the smoke would waif up into the apartments or to the houses and so forth, no smoke. So I think the people, at this point, are getting a message, not only from the health point of view, also from the point of view of trash, but also, you have neighbors, you have to get along with neighbors. And from my perspective, I would like that there be no smoking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Marlene Gomez, followed by Esther Schiller.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, member of the city council, city staff, and member of the community. My name is Marlene Gomez, and I am the associate director of SAFE, which stands for Smoke Free Air for Everyone. We are funded by the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Tobacco Control and Prevention Program to work with landlords, residents of multi-unit housing, and as well with policymakers. In 2008, we conducted surveys in Glendale of over 250 residents of apartments and condominiums. We had some young interns helping us with the surveys, and we asked them to be sure to interview people who smoked. As you can see from the survey results, they were very enthusiastic, and almost 30 percent of the respondents we interviewed were people who smoked. The survey results showed that 38 percent of respondents had tobacco smoke drift into their apartment or condominium home from outside or from another unit, yet only 6 percent complained to management. So this problem of exposure to tobacco smoke in apartments and condominiums is very much a hidden problem. But it is a public health problem because of the serious health effects which can be caused by daily exposure to even a small amount of tobacco smoke. We want to thank you for the policies you have enacted so far to protect people from tobacco smoke in apartments. No smoking in common areas, inside and outside, and disclosure, so that people know before they move into an apartment whether there is a person who smokes living in the adjacent unit. We hope that you will consider strengthening the multi-unit housing part of the ordinance because tobacco smoke doesn't just move from common areas into units, it can move from unit to unit and from balconies and patios into neighboring units. Our survey showed that 96 percent of respondents believe secondhand smoke is harmful to people's health. Recently, scientists have begun to focus on the phenomenon called third-hand smoke. When tobacco smoke is present in a room, it attaches to rugs, walls, furniture, and even clothing. Later, it will outgas back into the room even when no one is smoking. Now scientists are telling us that old tobacco smoke can do more than make a room smell stale. The combination of nicotine and nitrous acid indoors can create a very potent cancer-causing substance called nitrosamines, which are among the most broadly acting and potent carcinogens present in unburned tobacco and tobacco smoke. It is most dangerous to infants and children because of their frequent contact with surfaces and dust. So what you're considering this evening is very important for children. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Schiller, followed by Stephen Gallegos.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, city council members, staff, and members of the community. My name is Esther Schiller. I'm director of SAFE, Smoke Free Air for Everyone. We want to commend your staff for the very excellent staff report. It is clear that city staff have all worked together across departments in order to make the outdoor ordinance effective. Furthermore, we believe the recommendations provided in this evening's staff report will move Glendale forward in your leadership role in the state with regard to educating and protecting the health of the community. We're delighted to share with you that 13 cities in California have adopted ordinances to regulate secondhand smoke in apartments. A list is in the packet that we gave you. Santa Monica is not on the list because they've only done common areas, but they included condominiums in their ordinance. In fact, six of the cities include condominiums in their ordinance, and seven require separation of non-smoking and smoking-permitted units in apartment buildings. It makes sense to require creation of smoking and non-smoking units separated from each other. We've had that in hotels for years. People deserve a choice. This movement to protect people from tobacco smoke where they live is in fact spreading throughout the nation. There are organizations working to bring this public health problem to the attention of policymakers in Oregon, Washington, Maine, New Jersey, New York, Minnesota, Utah, and Michigan, to name a few states. HUD, the federal government's Department of Housing and Urban Development, has also recently taken notice of this health problem. In July 2009, HUD issued a memo to all public housing authorities, strongly urging them to make some or all of their units non-smoking. The HUD memo is in your packet. We receive phone calls and emails every day from residents of multi-unit housing who are suffering from a neighbor's tobacco smoke. In a two-year period, we'd have, we had 500 calls for help. The calls come from people who live in affordable housing, from people who live in market-rate apartments, and from people who live in condominiums. You would think that condominium owners would be able to go to their boards and that the problem would easily be resolved. The condominium boards do not have the advantage of the attorneys and the staff that you employ. They are frequently confused. Most board members do not know, for instance, that there's no constitutional right to smoke. They do not respond, even when their CCNRs contain a statement that one owner cannot cause another to lose the quiet enjoyment of their unit, which is certainly what happens when tobacco smoke infiltrates into a unit on a daily basis. Condominium residents do need your consideration and assistance. Thank you for all you've done so far, and thank you for what you're planning to do.
Thank you. Stephen Gallegos, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. As Glendale-born and a Glendale resident today, I am so proud of my city, Glendale, a recognized leader in L.A. County, California, and the world to promote public health protections for its citizens. Neighbors of mine with strong ties to their families in Armenia told me that local governments there are starting to discuss smoke-free protections from their, for their citizens because of what has happened here in Glendale, California. The city of Los Angeles has also followed Glendale's example to ban smoking in outdoor dining, and their city council voted unanimously to pass that ordinance. The implementation of Glendale's ordinance is actually saving lives and lowering healthcare costs, when you consider that 41,000 Californians die every year as a result of their use of tobacco, and over 60,000 Americans die nationally from smell, from secondhand smoke. Also, the young lady who spoke before me talked about third-hand smoke. It's also been researched by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as to be a major cause of sudden infant death syndrome. And that's because that third-hand smoke lands on their pillows, their blankets, their teathers, their bottles, and they're always putting things in their mouth. And so that poison is very, affects their immunity systems. I live in a high-dense apartment area here in Glendale, and I have seen, much like the gentleman said earlier about the reduction of cigarette butt litter in Glendale. There was a time when you would, when I would go walking over to Trader Joe's for my apartment, and I literally had to jump over the curb, over a bed of cigarette butts that were littering the curbs. And that was when I first moved here. But now, it's greatly reduced, and there may be five or six there on the curb. So it's, it's making Glendale a healthier city, it's making Glendale a cleaner city. And this is where I live, and I'm proud of it, and I'm proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Mike Mohill, followed by Katrine Madatien.
Good evening, mayor, council members. I'd like to first thank, Mike Mohill, resident of Glendale. I'd like to first thank Steve Zuren for the Public Works Department, for all the banners he's put out throughout the city. I think it's been a great message giver to the people who do smoke. As you all know, I walk quite often throughout the city, and talk with neighbors. And you'd be surprised how many people are now smoking in their houses but outside, in their front patios. The message is going out, believe it or not. I remember when this issue first came up, the ANC, the Armenian National Committee, came forward and said, you know what? Half of our, we did a survey, half of the Armenians don't want to smoke, and half do want to smoke. And those who do want to smoke want to quit. And that was the icing on the cake that evening, and this council voted for the ordinance. And I applaud you, applaud you. Now, I'm a reformed smoker myself, but it's been almost 40 years since I quit. But I don't think we need a sludge hammer, when a hammer can do the job for the smoking ordinance. Smokers have rights too. I don't like their rights, but they do have a right, just like I have the right to move away from where they're smoking. You know, they, again, they pay taxes too. And yes, they litter. I don't like the litter they put down. But you know what? People throw gum on the pa, people throw gum on the sidewalk. We have an ordinance against people throwing gum on the sidewalk? I don't like women who have, who wear too much perfume. Should we have an ordinance against them too? We need a balance. We need a balance. The message is going out. Again, Mr. Zuren, I'd like to thank you again, you and your crew for putting out those banners, truly. You can't miss it. And you know what? It's a great thing for Glendale, third-largest city in the county, and we're the beacon now. The other cities look at it and say, hey, Glendale has the ordinance, why don't we follow the ordinance? They've done all the homework. Isn't that great? So let's not, let's not do a sludge hammer job here tonight. Let's do a little reason and come up with a balance. Thank you.
Katrine Madatien, followed by Laurie Collins.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city members. I am a resident of Glendale. I have been for the last 21 years nearly, and I am just here to second all of the, what everyone has said. And I would like to just ask for $60,500 to be given for the fresh air ordinance, and I would, I would just like for that to be given for the outreach materials. And I would like to make sure that you guys know that I appreciate what you guys have done so far, because I truly have taken my own steps to make sure that people are not smoking around me, because it does pollute my own air, and I like having fresh air. So I would like to thank you for that and ask for that extra fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie Collins, followed by Carol Welling.
Good evening, my name's Laurie Collins. Thank you for taking up the proposed amendments to the ordinance. Thank you to Neighborhood Services for their efforts to enforce the ordinance and educate businesses and the public. And a special thanks to Mr. Weaver for advocating for the ordinance. I think his leadership is so important in this really important cause. It is time to stop accommodating those smokers and businesses who violate the ordinance, enforce without warnings. Without the threat of enforcement, the effectiveness of the ordinance is diminished at the cost of the health of nonsmokers. The staff report states that the city's police department and enforcement staff request that the warning requirement be removed from the ordinance. And I think it's very important that your own police department is behind removing the warnings. Enforcement only serves, also serves as a deterrent to smokers. We now live in a state where smokers are a small, but still harm-causing minority. The decrease in the number of smokers is not the result of an epiphany by smokers that smoking kills. That epiphany usually comes too late in their lives. The change is a result of the ban on smoking in businesses, public buildings and airplanes, and the effort to educate those who are not, who have not started to smoke. I support all the proposed amendments in the ordinance. I also support any additional changes to the ordinance that protect the health of nonsmokers and help to deter smoking. The ordinance right now has a broad definition of common areas of an apartment, apartment complex. Banning smoking in the common areas, yet accommodating smoking on balconies and on patios that a butt or overhang common areas is inconsistent with your ordinance. I understand the quandary of including condos in the ordinance, but could the ordinance be amended so that condos are covered in cases where the CCNRs are amended to ban smoking in common areas? Maybe such an amendment would give those condo owners who want to ban smoking in the common areas an incentive to advocate for amending the CCNRs of their buildings. Finally, the city may be hesitant to take on more possible infractions to prosecute. It admittedly has a full plate in terms of enforcing its laws. But the ordinance allows for private enforcement by persons affected by a violation, and thus gives a remedy to those who have to live with the harm caused by smokers. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Welling, the final card.
Good evening, Carol Welling, resident of the city. I just wanted to say that I support all efforts that the city has undertaken, and I'm very proud of the city. And I didn't know that Dave Weaver was spearheading it, but I'm proud of Dave then. I just wanted to mention that as an apartment owner, I have been, my building has been non-smoking for at least 20 years. And the one thing that people haven't brought up here that I think some, should be brought to the attention of apartment owners, I get a, an fire insurance premium break for a non-smoking building. So... So with that, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much for your input. All right. Why don't we, to break this up into chewable pieces, why don't we start with the...
Can we make general comments?
The $60,000... Well, yeah, we could make some general comments first, and then we're going to break this up. We'll start with the $60,500 allocation to extend the program. All right, you can make a comment, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah. Yes, I started this, but I didn't know what it was personally going to do to me emotionally, whatever, in doing it. But if I had to do it all over again, I would. My dad was a chain smoker. And I was born in 1939. 1940, he had a major heart attack. Doctors gave him six months to live if he didn't quit smoking. He quit on the dime. I never saw him ever smoke again. He had a heart condition for 19 years, and he died of another heart attack. I never had the smell of cigarette smoke in our house. Only time I did after that really was when LA Raiders moved to LA. I and my wife and children had season tickets in the top row of the Coliseum, and the marijuana drift from 78 rows below me came straight up, and we couldn't go anywhere. So we got a good whiff every five, six home games for a number of years until they moved out.
But you kept going to the games, Mr. Weaver.
Kept going to the games, and it was hell. Here are my little kids sitting there, and it sure wasn't helping them. No use complaining to the police, whatever, not with 90-some thousand people in there. But just imagine the whole Coliseum, open air at least. Next time I hit smoke concentration was when my kids were going to school, high school, in a private school. There was a mandatory requirement that both parents had to at least three times a year work the bingo games. And we dreaded it, because when we went into those halls where the bingo games were, it was just literally filled with cigarette smoke upstairs, downstairs, in the adjacent room. And my wife and I had to work that four hours three times a year. And when we'd go home at night, we'd immediately have to take all the clothes, put them in the washer, start washing them, and we would both take showers. If we had left those clothes laying around, we'd have had that thirdhand smoke generating it throughout the house. Those are the only times I really hit that hard. You know, we talked about the greening of America, and now the country is doing something about smoking. I found an article, "Should Smoking Be Banned Outdoors?", and it said 19 states have banned smoking in workplaces, bars, and restaurants. Just that much, 19 states already. Condominium owners in New York City and Dallas filed lawsuits recently to prevent smokers from lighting up in their own apartments, claiming that smoke seeps through the shared walls and ceilings. So New York City and Dallas is suing. Another study indicated that heart attacks drop by update. 26% within three years in communities with smoking bans. So times are definitely changing. I've had countless emails over the last year and a half, "When are you going to do something about apartments and condos?" Just two little snippets out of a couple I received. My friend and I were in a local restaurant, and a couple across from us lit up right inside the restaurant. We were stunned. And I guess the owner didn't stop it, the restaurant. And then, this was interesting, I found out, this person says, "Please start with Adams Hill." Followed by, "I was also up at Glen Oaks Park, right next to where I live. Five people were sitting at a table, smoking, next to the kids' play area, all five of them. And that's in a park." What the heck? People put cellphones in their ear too, so much for the law. And then the woman who said, "I have muscular dystrophy. She has neighbors that smoke, one smokes a pipe. It's hard for her to breathe. I try to get fresh air in my apartment. When I open the windows or doors, I smell smoke. It's so bad that when I do my laundry on the second floor, I smell pipe smoke from the first floor." Says the building's big enough that you could have them separated. But she says the smokers think secondhand smoke is a joke, and she can't argue with them because they don't agree. But the overwhelming statistics that we see right and left from everybody is the contrary. When our own report says 78% of California voters support a law requiring apartment buildings to offer nonsmoking sections, 74% of California favor having smoke-free sections in apartment buildings, 70% of California voters believe that a prospective tenant moving into apartment should be told if a tenant next door spokes. The statistics keep going on. And our city, back in November of '07, when I asked for it, I was told there were approximately 75,000 households in the city. Of those, there are 37,000 apartment units and 9,000 condo units. And obviously, in the last three years, there's been more built. So that's a significant number of the people who live in this city that are potentially being subjected to secondhand smoke and thirdhand smoke. And if we sit still and don't do something, more than we've done already, it's a travesty. I support this whole ordinance, and when it gets to the point, I have an idea on what percentage should be, smoking, nonsmoking. The only thing I'm considering, if we put restrictions on apartments and on condos, you can't pass an ordinance, adopt it next month, send a letter to every apartment owner and condo owner, the group that runs it, and tell them, "You have 30 days to shift all your tenants around." It isn't going to happen that quick. You can set down the ordinance, say you have, and this is what I'd like to know from staff, three to five years, or through attrition, that you start to separate the units and get them in place. I don't know how long it takes, but smokers do have their rights. They just shouldn't have their rights the way it is organized now. That's a question I'd like staff to answer on. And other than that, banning it on balconies and general areas, all of that, I support. I support leaving the bingo action the way it is. Like I said, I've been through it. It's just not right. So I'm very complimentary of staff. I know they've had to go through hell, so to speak, in some situations. But we're on the cutting edge again, and I'm so very proud of what staff has done so far and the support we've got for the public in the direction we're going. Those that do smoke, I don't know what your life expectancy is. I hate to think of it if you're smoking around children and they're ingesting this into their lungs in the units day and night. That's too bad. But even as we have seen on these children that drew those posters, we're getting to the students at a very young age now, and they will probably grow up to be nonsmokers. So I'm proud to see that occurring too. So we'll go point by point.
Okay. Mr. Drayman, did you have comments?
No, not at this time.
Oh, Mr. Najarian?
Well, how do you want to start in on this? I guess is my question.
Well, I want to start, we're going to start by talking about the funding to extend the program. Then we could go to enforcement, including signs, decide on the warnings. Then we could move to disclosures and all of the other items surrounding the apartment buildings, and then we can move on to condos. Then we can talk about the bingo parlors.
Well, why don't we then start with the allocation of the $60,500 for our ambassador? And my only question is, is that a safe job? I mean, you seem like such a nice, nice young lady, and I've seen some of the people that are smoking, and sometimes they're, you know, they drink and they smoke, they smoke and they drink, and do you feel, I mean, do you feel ready to tackle this job now that perhaps there's no more warnings? We'll be discussing that.
He's not as nice.
We'll need your name for the record.
My name is Arminé Jimenez. I'm with Neighborhood Services. I'm the fresh air ambassador. I feel very safe. Been doing this a little over a year now, and I haven't, there hasn't been a situation where I really felt that my life was in danger, because we do this with information and education. We're not telling anybody what to do. We're just trying to explain what the ordinance is and what they can do to comply. And from my experience, I have had so many considerate smokers call and ask if they're in violation of the ordinance. Obviously, all the banners and the outreach materials that we have, people have seen it, they call, they ask. Like I said, you know, 99% of the callers are very supportive. I've had nothing but people commanding me for the job that I do and commanding our city council for spearheading this, and I really haven't had any issues. Like I said, we do everything with education and information. We're not the smoking police. We do the education, and we are there for technical support, for any kind of assistance they may need, any kind of materials we can forward them to help them with compliance. And this is for apartment owners, businesses, residents. And we have outreach materials in different languages, just in case there's a language barrier. So it's been a pleasure serving the community for the last year. If the opportunity given, it'd be my pleasure once again.
Okay, thank you. All right, that didn't quite answer the question of when we do become the smoking police.
So you're, let me just ask a follow-up. So you're not at the enforcement end?
No, I'm at the education end.
Okay, so you don't see someone and say, "Hey, buster, put that out."
Actually, no.
Do you call someone else to do that? You call Sam or the police or...
Councilman Najarian, no. When I do go out, I do have an inspector with me. If I am going out for an inspection to an apartment building, I always have an inspector accompanying me. And if I do see somebody smoking, my initial reaction is not to go and tell them, "Put this out." You're not supposed to. I'll just say, "Did you know, by any chance, did you know that there's an ordinance in Glendale which prohibits smoking right where you're at, in a common area? Do you mind putting it out?" So far, I haven't had any problems. People always say, "Sorry, didn't know. Is this a new thing? Are we following Burbank? Where can I smoke?" So people always ask follow-up questions. And like I said, since we're doing it with education and information, I haven't had any issues. I don't know, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's better, yeah. I'm comfortable with...
Okay, does someone want to make a motion that we move forward to allocate $60,500?
That's AP 3.
3.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Right.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. All right, now let's piggyback on that and let's talk about enforcement. Let's talk about signs and the idea that we're pretty much through with the warning period, and then we'll begin to take stronger measures. Mr. Drayman?
Well, I just want to say that I support full and strong enforcement at this point. I don't see the issue of education and enforcement as separate issues, actually, because when we passed this ordinance, it was my thinking at the time, and I think it was shared by some of my colleagues anyway, certainly by people who came to speak, that the idea of this one-year period of education was to, that was basically a one-year warning. It was one year to gear up, to get ready, to understand, to be able to decipher the details, and now that one year is over. And it's time to, and I think many people have complied, and many people are trying to comply, and that's borne out by what we've heard here tonight by various speakers. But that time period is over, and I think now it is time for the second step, which is part and parcel of the whole package, and that is the enforcement part. The signage was lacking. It is amazing, after all of the debate and all of the discussion and all of the damaged brain cells to try to wrap our heads around what we could do, what we couldn't do, the legal ramifications of what was possible and not, and listening to all the public input and discussion on the dais and debate, and we missed that. Let's not miss it now. Let's move on that. No, I'm ready. I'm absolutely ready to vote in favor of this.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Howard. In terms of enforcement, you have the smoker who is caught in the act, visibly cited by, say, a police officer or a city inspector, community development type inspector. Then you also have the business that is permitting that to go on in their establishment, or let's just take those two. So how would we set this up? Who's going to do the enforcing, and how do we deal with the business?
Sam can get up and strive, but it's outlined in the ordinance.
Mayor Quintero, members of city council, there was never a warning requirement for the issue of what you described, which would be an abetting. That's encouraging the act of actually smoking. We implement this ordinance in a broader context of what you direct us to do, and that is we work with our community. If we have not been out to a business and they don't understand that they can't have ashtrays on their table, that's Arminé's job. Arminé would go out and tell the business, "Maybe you don't understand that smoking would be prohibited." And so there wouldn't be an immediate rush to judgment on any of the work working with the businesses or anybody else that might be encouraging the act of smoking, which is what your question is. Education is always going to precede that.
Okay, that's good. How about the actual fines? How are we going to, will they increase as the incidents continue or...
It's an infraction, and if you receive, your first infraction is up to, I believe, is it $50, $100?
$100.
$100. Second one then goes up to, I believe, $250. Again, outlined in the code, third offense within a year, it goes up, I believe, $500.
And then not exceed $500 or...
It follows the general penalty.
And the reason...
And any beyond totaling three within a year, then it becomes a misdemeanor.
Okay. All right, and the reason I'm asking is that someone might consider that the price of doing business if they're having a special party, let the people smoke, and so it will move up to misdemeanor?
It's progressively, it gets progressively higher, and after three within a year, it becomes a misdemeanor.
Okay. All right. And then how about in terms of city staff, who would do the enforcing?
The enforcement responsibility falls between two operations. Your code enforcement officers are empowered under the original ordinance to enforce this, as are police officers are empowered to enforce everything in the municipal code. The problem that we've had that police expressed immediately when we adopted the ordinance was the problem with the warning. We explained to police that was a specific strategy that we worked with the city council on to encourage education during that first year. We had police that issued citations, not a lot during this past year. I think that, in particular, those officers that work particular neighborhoods, I don't want to say they're looking forward to it. I think they've got some people that are egregious violators that I think that once they address those, probably 10 to 15 people, a significant chunk of the overall problem would go away.
Yeah, I personally think it'll happen in some businesses and then also in the city parks. That continues to, I see that on a regular basis.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one question, Mr. Howard or Sam, have any of the local constables taken issue with these types of citations and refused to, refused to find them guilty?
Um...
For what, for various reasons?
I wouldn't say the constable...
Or... I'm not aware. If the question is whether or not any of the local judges have determined to dismiss these cases for one reason or another, that they just either don't like them or otherwise. I've not heard that from staff.
Okay.
No, they haven't dismissed... No, they haven't dismissed the infraction. They sadly dismissed our fine on occasion, which we don't see much of, anyway. But they still get the guilty verdict. And honestly, the time off to be in court to actually deal with this has been the deterrent. We have not had, probably where you're going with this is have we had repeats as a result of that? No. The judges, they realize that you, that you don't enact laws lightly. And sometimes we have to, and when we did this at this time, the first time we were in there, we actually said, this is, we went in with our officer and said, this is what the law is that our city council has adopted. You haven't seen this before in front of the commissioner and said, this is where we want to go.
Will we update him on any changes that we?
Probably the first time we go in, Councilmember Najarian.
I think that's a good idea to get them.
Provide a copy of the ordinance to every bench officer here.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we are in agreement that we will post the signs, we'll enforce, et cetera, et cetera. So let's have a motion to that.
Well, we just need consensus at this point.
And then you'll come back with the ordinance.
As, as we go through each one of these, there's an ordinance for introduction. If these recommendations are germane, and they obviously are at this point, we'll come back to you with an ordinance in two weeks for adoption if the ordinance is introduced with these provisions included.
Okay.
Many of them are in the draft ordinance sets before you now, in a strikeout version.
Okay, the next question I think that perhaps we're going to find a majority voting for would be the condominium, whether we should prohibit smoking in the common areas of condominium developments. What, do we know where Mr. Weaver is? Mr. Drayman?
I have some questions about this. Mr., Mr. Howard, with regard to a balcony policy, people smoking on balconies, can you explain to me what the difference is or is there a difference with regard to condos versus apartments?
Well, the difference between condominiums and apartments is an apartment is the?
No, not the difference between a condominium and apartment. The difference between smoking on a balcony in a condominium and smoking on a balcony in an apartment.
In terms of?
In terms of ability to enforce.
Ability to enforce? I don't think, I think the ability to enforce is the same as it would be in either location if the ordinance is drafted to target enforcement of the smoker.
All right.
Either way, it would have to be observed or reported and observed and evidence gathered to support the violation.
All right, and, and I'm not sure if I heard, understood one of the speakers clearly, but it seemed to me that the implication had to do with reconciling CCNRs in certain condominiums and local ordinances. That is not a problem.
No, I think that what the speaker was getting to, if I, if I understood her right, was the notion that the difficulty that some homeowner associations have with trying to effectuate changes in their CCNRs to prohibit smoking within the units themselves and that if the city added some teeth to that, for example, noting that if the CCNRs provided for prohibition, that the city's ordinance would kick in and would enforce that essentially would, because sometimes it's difficult for homeowner associations to enforce CCNRs other than to create penalties against them and ultimately threaten them with essentially a foreclosure of their unit if they continue to violate CCNRs and fail to pay penalties. I think that, then again, I'm not trying to speak for the speaker. I'm trying to believe what I understood the speaker to be saying, and that is being able to use the city's enforcement authority if CCNRs were amended as a lever or as a way of enforcing.
With regard to smoking inside the unit you're talking about?
That's the way I understood it. I don't see a problem in the council adopting an ordinance that would prohibit smoking in the common or open areas of condominium or a rental unit.
Okay. So currently in an apartment house in the city of Glendale, in terms of common areas, if I'm a smoker and I live in that building, where can I smoke?
Mr. Engel can better answer that, but I believe the landlord is entitled to set up a location within the common area as a smoking permitted location based upon certain criteria that he can provide.
Councilmember Drayman, a member of city council, Scott Howard mentioned that they can do that, they're not required to do that. And in some cases, they don't meet the distancing requirements from windows or other openings to actually have it. In those areas where they can meet those requirements, they could actually have a smoking, smoking permitted area in the common area of an apartment.
All right.
Some choose to have that, some choose not to.
All right, let's go through a bit of a checklist here, if you'd indulge me. Common areas, condominiums, hallways, internal, external hallways? We could prohibit? What do we have now?
For condominiums, nothing.
Nothing, okay. With apartment, with apartments, hallways?
It's prohibited, it's common area.
Internal or external, correct?
Internal or external.
Okay, plazas?
Internal or external prohibited.
Pool areas?
On apartments prohibited.
Yeah, courtyards?
Apartments prohibited.
So all of the, what we would call common, common areas in a, in a apartment building. That is currently the case with apartments. The, the aspect that we did not tackle was the balconies.
Correct. Because that's, that's private open space. That's not public, that's not common open space.
Right, okay. But separate and apart from whether it's common area, not common area, we didn't tackle that, that aspect. All right.
Yes.
Okay. Let me say, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you for the, for the answers on those things. With regard to condominiums, this was an area that when we sat down and debated this issue, we sort of drove right up to that point and we stopped. And the rationale that, that I heard from my colleagues on the dais at the time was we need to move slowly, we need to move carefully, let's move the ball forward, let's move it down the field, but let's, let's wait and see in a year where we are. My concern at the time, and I think it was shared by other people, with regard to other council members, with regard to condos, particularly with apartments, we were talking about what are the implications of banning smoking on a balcony and driving the smoker indoors with their family and causing them to smoke in there alone? That was, that was what was raised on the dais and that was one of the concerns. It was trying to find some kind of balance when you say not in any of the common areas and not on your balcony. And we say to a smoker that's, let's say, you know, mom or dad, they've got a couple of young kids inside, we are driving him or her inside with the kids. What can you offer, what kind of insight can you offer, Mr. Engle?
I'm not sure I understand the question, so let me?
It wasn't a question. It was a comment and I'm asking you to, to give me your opinion of that, that situation. Because that was, that was the rationale that was.
And I, and I think having looked at those discussions numerous times, I'd say that was an accurate reflection of where we got with the original ordinance. I think in answer to your question, part of that is addressed tonight if you deal with the issue of separation of units. And if you choose not to, we have to come back to this and that may be where you're going. If you deal with the separation of units, you actually end up then by, by virtue of your action designated a certain percentage to be smoke-free. And what would happen at that point, there wouldn't be any smoking, whether it would be on the balcony or the other thing, because those are smoke-free units.
All right.
Okay? So it's partially resolved if you were, if you were to choose to do that. If you choose not to do that, comes back to the answer of your, we have to then answer your question. Do you want to drive people onto the balcony and then ostensibly shift that secondhand smoke up or down?
Right.
Or laterally, for that matter.
All right. So for myself, Mr. Mayor, then thank, and thank you for, for answering the questions and helping me with that. I'm, I'm ready to, I guess you'd say, pull the trigger on condos and apartments. Balconies, common areas for condos as well.
Okay, Mr. Drayman.
Just wanted to, do you need to know about the separation of units first? As you said, you fall back on what Mr. Drayman just said, if we don't separate. If we separate, then we don't have any of this to worry about.
You have, council member Weaver, member of the city council, you have less of it to worry about because?
You, well, let me just make, make the comment, there is a distinction between apartments and condominiums. You can talk about percentages, you can talk about relocating or locating people. In a condominium, let's say, I own a condominium, I'm not sure how the city of Glendale is going to compel a smoker that owns his unit, that they're going to sell it and move. We can't. That won't happen. So therefore, we're left with a fixed balcony where you have smoker above non-smoker and vice versa. The only protection, if you think of it that way, is knowing when you, when you close an escrow, who is around you and, and the disclosure aspect, in other words.
All right, we're going to be talking about that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond on that, the ordinance that we have in front of us says three years for apartments separate condos. But I remember, right, the average length somebody lives in a house in this community is approximately seven years. So if you wrote in there condos, give a 10-year window, for instance, on condos, most likely you'd have turnovers in a good number of the units.
I'm not sure that that's.
Just using the average.
I'm just not sure that that's even possible legally.
I don't know.
Legally, I don't know how you can set an amount of time for someone to have to sell their, their home to comply with an ordinance about where in a condominium complex.
He's heading.
So.
In, in thinking this thing through literally on the fly on the dais, I do have some concerns about trying to mandate smoke-free condominiums clustering where you have existing units. I think with a new development, you can do that.
Yeah.
With existing units where someone, where you have an ownership interest in the unit among, within those walls and then a percentage ownership of the common area, it becomes extremely difficult, if not impossible, to try to legally enforce requiring someone to sell their unit as a non-smoking unit. There's a fairness issue and there's also a potential legal issue.
Okay, well, right now, we're discussing condominiums specifically, the common areas, which are the hallways, plaza, pool, courtyards, et cetera.
Well, I just wanted, wanted to say that I'm, I'm also, as I understand it, we can consider balconies as well.
Yeah, we can consider balconies. If you want to consider balcony.
For myself, I want to include balconies.
For condos?
For condos.
I concur.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
Let me ask a question, Sam. Someone lives in an apartment and it's a non-smoking apartment, but he really wants to smoke a cigarette. Where does he go? He can't go out to the curb, right? Because the curb is?
Actually, I disagree.
Curb is permitted?
Curb would be permitted. Matter of fact, the, probably the, the one complaint that we would get is, I have, I now have to go out to the sidewalk to smoke a cigarette. And there's a lot of people that cheer that, but for the smoker, that's really their primary complaint. And that's really where they would go.
That's okay to do that under our ordinance.
Although, much like we have done in some of our facilities, it, it, there could be exceptions where an apartment owner could create a smoking location, much like we have done in our work locations here. So you wouldn't necessarily in every case have to go out to the curb to smoke your cigarette.
And if I could piggyback on what Mr. Starbird said, the apartment owners recognize that they've got paying tenants there. And if, and if they have paying tenants, they're going to want to see if they can accommodate them within what the, the context of the rules is, are that we adopt. And so what has happened in those, where they, where they, where they can and they feel that they want to do this, they are providing those smoking permitted areas. And part of what Arminé and Stephen do, quite honestly, is go out with that little roller wheel and help them say, here, let's help you figure out what to do. And it actually answers your question, Mr. Najarian. There's a lot of people that, that recognize that if we can provide that, we will. And, and they are.
Okay. And what might be useful, I know the ordinance describes it, but it might be useful briefly to talk about how this transition takes place in existing apartment developments.
No, we're not talking about that yet. We're strictly on the condo.
So let me just, let me just ask for the, I guess, the premise that we're, like Mr. Drayman's premise or sub-motion about?
Top views?
Yeah. What exactly is it that you had proposed that we're moving towards?
Well, here's the thing, this is, this is my thinking on it, maybe you agree, maybe you don't. A year ago, when we talked about this, I think there was some consensus, well, there was consensus on the dais, that this ordinance would not, first of all, wouldn't tackle condos. But secondly, even as it related to balconies with apartments, that we would be driving smokers who would leave their kids inside, out onto the balcony, yes, their smoke grifts, it affects other people, it affects other people's quality of life, and even more drastically, perhaps, their health, to drive them inside and smoke with their kids. My feeling is this, and this is what has changed for me, and I was one of the people that felt that way. But what has changed for me is that there is this continued issue of how we are affecting other residents and their health. In a condominium, I don't believe we can tell individual unit owners, you have to live over on this side of the building only with smokers. I don't think we can do that. So with condominiums, as it relates to balconies, I think we have to turn to the, the parents and the owners who are smokers and say, look, you know, it's your obligation, these are your children, it's your obligation not to go inside and smoke with your kids. Take it out of the building somewhere. Smoke elsewhere. But, you know, at, at some point, we have to factor in the quality of life of other people who've also paid to have their condominiums and want to open their sliders, want to open their windows, want to sit out on their, their patios and have the right to breathe. By the way, I don't maintain that smokers have no rights. I just maintain that they don't have a right to cause me to breathe their smoke. So, and I do believe that most, most smokers in this day and age and in our city with the ordinance in the works for a year, there are a lot of, of compliant smokers and a lot of smokers that are trying to do the right thing. At this point, though, I have to bring some balance to, to this issue and say, you know what? Other people are buying these condos. They have the right to clean air in their units and has to become incumbent upon the parents to take the cigarettes elsewhere, not smoke with the kids. So I'm going to rely on their, their sense to do the right thing.
Okay, so just, let me just be clear. I mean, I understand that. So are you proposing then that all the laws currently that apply to apartments, the open areas, the hallways, the pools, the plazas, apply to condos, plus no smoking on the balconies?
I'm saying all except this issue of percentage of?
Right, we're not there yet. We're not to the percentages. We're talking about the common areas as they're defined, plus?
Balconies.
No smoking on balconies.
Yes, that is what I'm saying.
Well, Mr. Najarian, I would, I would further distinguish from apartments by saying that you can have a situation where multiple condominium owners have been there first, let's say, someone will buy a condo near them, they now become affected by that new purchaser's habit. So that's a further, I mean, with an apartment.
I'm not arguing, I'm just getting the frame of the?
For me, that's also an important thing. With an apartment, it's a little bit different in the sense that they're renters and perhaps they can be moved by the manager or the owner of the building. A condominium owner is stuck in that unit when an outside force comes in and now begins to affect their quality of life.
So I would support that.
Okay, so we have consensus on, on the condominium. Okay, now we'll move to apartments. Let's start with the idea of disclosure and how we can go about really strengthening our disclosure section of the ordinance when you rent an apartment, how we can go about notifying that prospective tenant, renter, what it is that he or she may encounter in renting the unit, et cetera. Any ideas there?
First about the separation.
Well, first, just the disclosure, so that someone has a map, let's say, of the unit or required, the apartment owner or management company is required to say, look, we have 10 units here and we know that five of them are smokers and they're located in these apartments and you are going to rent the apartment next to them, or some sort of disclosure. How do we work on that?
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, in the strikeout version of your ordinance on page 36 or 37, well, let me back up a little bit. On page 36, we already required disclosure on the ordinance that's been in effect for the past year and a half or so. One of the issues that came up is exactly what you described, Mayor Quintero, in what exactly constitutes a notification of a tenant of where the location is. We actually codified that. And that's that map that we talked about, the exhibit, that shows where the smoking units are or are not. They have to provide that and that's actually codified now. Before, it just said they had to do it. And you kind of picked up on what kind of a, what a weakness was. We didn't say what it was that they actually had to do. And that's what this does and that's what we're anticipating would work. Trying to make it as easy as possible, because we're requiring that map to be posted, anyway, just provide that to the tenant so they know. And they're making an informed decision when they rent.
Okay. Does everyone agree with that, uh-
Yes.
-concept?
Yep.
And we have four in agreement on that, uh, concept. Okay, so the next would be the idea of establishing a percentage of non-smoking, uh, units, whether to ban, uh, smoking on patios and balconies of multi-unit, uh, rental housing.
I'll throw in 75%. There's statistics that are statewide. People supporting whatever that seems to be right about it, too.
All right, well, my, my question on that issue is, how do we go about doing this? I mean, this, to me, is gonna be a very, very difficult endeavor, whether it happens over three years or five years or however long it takes. But let's say, you know, five-unit, seven, nine-unit building, most of the construction in Glendale, or a lot of it, all the 70s and 80s, 90s units are just straight-line, uh, five, seven, nine, or 11, that's basically what we have, straight-line units. Um, how would you go about setting this up? What happens when a tenant has been there for 10 years and has the front unit and, I mean, how's this gonna work?
Mayor, Mayor Quintero, you saw, you heard me sigh. Mayor Quintero, members of City Council, we met with a group of, of apartment owners and managers that included some of the larger companies, it included some people with those tiny, those typical Glendale buildings, seven to 12 units, and, and several mom-and-pops. Their recommendation to us was, just make us smoke free. We'd much prefer that, much like Ms. Wellings said, we get the insurance benefit or anything else. We kind of took a broader view of that, in that we still have to house people that are smokers in town, that, that, it's just the reality. And, and a universal prohibition against smoking, um, in, in apartments, we just didn't feel was realistic, and we didn't feel comfortable presenting that to you, honestly, even though that was their recommendation. Because they had, they shared, and I say this because this was, they had shared the same concern, how do we go about doing that? What we ended up with presenting to you in the ordinance was the, uh, the, um, solution they came up with, said if we can't present a universal ban, how would, uh, tell us some things that you would, you would think would work best. Because we suggested a five-year, uh, turnover with apartments. They wanted three. Um, we thought five would be a lot with the, what we're calling the pressure relief valve in your ordinance, and this comes really back to my days of working in the neighborhood task force, is when we surveyed residents in the community, and some of you were involved in that, we found people that were, had lived in their apartment units for as long as 20 to 30 years. We do not want to make anybody, whether they're a smoker or non-smoker, have to transition their units if they're a long-term tenant, nor would we want to have the, the apartment owner have to deal with what they are a long-term tenant. If they're a long-term good tenant that happens to be a smoker, we want, we want the, the apartment owner to be able to accommodate that. We need to work with them. So the ordinance that you have in front of you actually addresses that a little bit. There's a pressure relief valve that allows an exemption for those units that aren't going to turn over and which a smoker's in, um, to go beyond the three years, and you deal with it over time. Because that's the realist, it comes back to people like living in this community. Um, and, and our tenancy in our buildings actually is significantly longer than a lot of other communities.
So-
But there's a pressure relief valve, Mayor Quintero, that's in there, for, just for that reason.
Well, let's talk about that pressure relief valve in a little more detail, because, I mean, we talk about the, this discussion with, um, building owners, and I can imagine that for them, you know, they said, just make it, I think, non-smoking, or make it three years instead of five, because we're talking to, in essence, business people about efficiently conducting their business. But there's the human element, too.
Right.
And, and that's, I have to look at that.
Right.
Because that's what we're going to hear about, and, and that's what we're also elected to deal with. So let's, let me understand, um, you know, with the specter of, you know, someone's grandmother who has, uh, been living in a unit for 25 years, 30 years, by the way, that's not so unusual in this city.
That's what I'm saying.
Um, um, and, uh, we have a five-year turnover, a three-year, uh, transition period. What is the escape valve? How does it work?
Um, yeah. Councilmember Draymond, member of City Council, page 39 of your strikeout version, actually, and I'll say that if the landlord cannot fully satisfy the requirements for co-location, the landlord may seek an exemption to maintain the existing location of one or more, uh, smoking designated units or non-smoking units, um, by filling out an application and applying for exemption. It goes through a process that's, that says that. Shall, the, the person who hears this and by our ordinance, it's my position, make that you guys if you want, but, but at this point, it's-
Thank, thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
It's my position. It says, "That position shall evaluate the facts and circumstances that are described in the application, possibly inspect the rental housing site, and shall reasonably determine," and that term reasonable, you hear all the way through here, whether or not, whether clustering or separating the smoking units or non-smoking units or both is either impractical or unfeasible, as we have set forth in what our definitions are, and that the landlords demonstrated that they've made a diligent effort towards meeting the requirement, and, but, but there's an evaluation process, Mayor.
Let me just, just say, I, I appreciate you reading the section. It wasn't that, it isn't in our packet.
Right.
We've seen that. What I'm saying is, put the packet down, just talk to me. How are you gonna do this? What, what are the criteria, in other words, you know? Uh, someone who comes to you and says, look, you know, my 87-year-old grandmother or my 90-year-old mother has been there eight years, you're gonna make her move? Is there a different consideration than when she's been there 15 years or 20 years?
Mayor Quintero, member of City Council, off the top of my head, I think you're, realistically, it's gonna be kind of in the five-year term, honestly, from what I would look at it for be reasonable.
Okay.
In, in answer to your question, I mean, realistically, you have to look at, I, the nature of my job in, in working in neighborhood services is, we have a partnership relationship with those people that provide housing in this community. And we certainly want to make sure that they're, that, that we're able to accommodate their needs, but we also want to make sure that if you ultimately adopt this, that we're encouraging them to comply over time. And that's, that's the nature of just about everything we do.
Mr. Starbird, then Ms. Nogarian.
Along with that, as, while we're on this topic of administration, um, until we get through all of this, which could be several years, how much staff time and administration will this take, do you figure?
Less and less.
Well, less and less, but it might be more and more in the, in the early years. And I'm wondering, is, is this something that your ambassador transitions to, or is this gonna take more people than that?
I think, Mr. Starbird, member of City Council, I think our ambassador could transition this. Where we had talked about this is that we do, as, as many of you know, we do what's called a systematic rental housing inspection, um, and then this is one of the things that we thought that we'd be looking at as we inspect those units every four years. You'd start seeing that. Are we gonna catch those kind of things every year? Absolutely not. But we don't catch other things every year. We catch them as, as we do the periodic inspections. And that was our thought, is to incorporate this into that and use, because we're actually out at just about every apartment building every four years anyway at this point, this is when we'd catch it. And we'd actually thought about that.
Scott, a question for the city attorney. Uh, so let's, I'm a landlord and I've got, uh, I've got a smoker amongst non-smokers, or I've got too many smokers. Um, do we need to amend the just cause eviction to get rid of a smoker?
It actually is, has been amended.
You, you've already done that?
Already done it.
To do that?
Previous ordinance, or, the ordinance was adopted a year ago.
And that's saying, is that just a general violation of state, I mean, of city ordinance?
It's just another provision that provides for the landlord's ability to evict a tenant under the just cause eviction ordinance, non-compliance with the smoking provisions. That's already there.
But I, I had another point, and that was back to-
Well, let me just ask a quick question here. So then if there's, let's say, seven units and there's seven smokers, uh, at a certain point, the, uh, building has to be cleared of X amount of, uh, smokers, is that right?
Over time, that would be true.
Over time, that would be it.
Yeah. Although, and I think this gets back to Councilmember Draymond's example that I wanted to respond to, there, the exemption process that Mr. Engel or his successor would administer has specific provisions to allow for just the type of factual scenario you presented. If there's been a long-term tenant, they're not going to be evicted, they're not gonna be removed. If the landlord is not doing anything, for example, to encourage that tenant to stay with a below-market rant and saying, you know, you're a smoker, I'd like to keep you here for a thousand years, if the landlord is basically treating the tenant as any other landlord would treat a tenant, and the tenant's just a tenant that's been there a long time and continues to stay there, that's one of the factors that would be considered in, in obtaining that exemption.
Ms. Nogarian?
Yeah.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I agree with Sam's approach. I mean, you just can't shut everybody down. It's kind of a case-by-case scenario, what is fair and right under the unique circumstances of that one case, whether you create the exemption or whatever. I suppose there's always another scenario, too. You could put a sign out in front, smoking apartment building, let everybody in the building smoke. You could always do that, too.
Can we do that? Can we do that?
You mean, designate a smoking building? Can you designate a building that's all smoking?
Could a landlord designate a 100% smoking?
Could a landlord do it, depending on what you do? If you have a requirement that 75% has to be smoke-free, they wouldn't be able to do that.
Unless qualified, it's somehow.
Well, they would have to, you would have to essentially start granting exemptions, but the criteria for infeasibility probably not be met.
It gets more complicated.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Engel, we just heard the city attorney mention your successor. Does he know something we don't?
There's no plans on the horizon, Mayor Quintero, members of the council.
Just curious, because City Council doesn't earn much, so, so if there's gonna be an opening, I'm not, just kidding. Um, well, here's where I am on it, and, on, on the apartments, and, um, I know I'm gonna disappoint some, some folks. That's part of what this job is. Somebody always walks away disappointed whenever we make a decision, but, taken many ways, couldn't it? Um, in any case, uh, I'm, I'm not ready to go there with apartments. I'm ready to go there with balconies, as I've said. I'm ready to go there with, uh, obviously to continue with the, uh, the common areas, which is already a part of our ordinance, and to add balconies to it for the same, uh, criteria or the same reasoning as the condos. However, I'm not ready to set down mandates with regard to percentages of units and start this process of attrition and juggling and exemptions and trying to, um, trying to decipher, you know, this individual who can't move because of economic reasons or can't move because they're gonna be uprooting their kids out of a particular school they're going to because now they're gonna take an apartment elsewhere. I, I just, I'm not ready to go there. I am, uh, willing to continue to move the ball forward, as we keep saying, and revisit this again. Um, and if my colleagues are interested in, in another set period of time, as we did the last time, I'm prepared to add balconies to it, um, which does deal with the issue of drifting smoke, uh, into other people's, uh, units, uh, when their windows are open. So it, it does at least deal with the issue of, uh, of use and enjoyment of your, your balcony, your patio, whatever, and it still would include the common areas. I'm just, I, I see the issue of the, the logistics of setting this up as being just Herculean. And, uh, not to make a bad pun, is there a good pun, but, not to make a bad pun, but I think we need to catch our breath on this, uh, see where we're also gonna go with the rest of, of the issues tonight related to smoking, uh, ordinance. Uh, I'm just not ready to go there with, um, parsing out a percentage.
Mr. Mayor?
Weaver?
Well, I am, because I receive too many emails from people that have smoke coming up, not only the balconies, but up through the walls, inside the units, and they have children that have asthma, whatever, and other illnesses, and we're saying, no, we're not gonna move on this, we'll come back and visit it. No, this is the whole crux of the matter, eventually, in a timeline, getting separation so the non-smoker and the families therein don't have to face the problem. Maybe it's monumental, but, you know, the, nothing's easy in life. It's gonna take time, it's gonna take time. But we have to start protecting those residents of this city that live in apartments surrounded by people in other apartments that are smoking. It's just, it's a, it's a health issue.
Mr. Draymond, then we'll let you.
Okay. I want to respond in a friendly way, because I think it's, uh, it's a good debate, and it's interesting debate, and I agree with much of what Mr. Weaver is saying. I think it comes down to, though, what you interpret as starting. And if we were to, to take the argument that was just made, it's coming up through the walls and all of that, so, okay, let's not even deal with portioning out percentages, just ban it altogether. You could say that's a start, but to me, it is too much, too fast. Um, so the, the bite at this apple, I'm willing to just personally take, what I consider a start, uh, is the, uh, is the, uh, the balconies added to the rest of what we already call in common areas. Um, I, you know, there's a human element to this, uh, that I, I think we have to, I think we have to revisit this. I think it's too much, too quick, on that aspect of it.
The only response I've been making to that is, there's over 37,000 apartment units, 75 to 80% of the people in this city do not smoke. So you're talking about, uh, 20% of people driving the train. 37,000 units out there, that's a, a lot of people that aren't gonna be helped at all in the near future. I think that's the whole crux of what we're trying to do, in, in my opinion.
Mr. Engel, um, what's been your experience on the designated, uh, smoking areas? How easy has that been to put together, once again, with the prototype, straight-line, Soviet-style apartment building, as I like to call them?
Uh, Mr. Kosis and Ms. Jimenez have been out there doing that. In those buildings, in, in, in the typical Glendale, the buildings that we're talking about, there are almost inevitably one area where you can, you can get this towards the rear, if you can envision what the building is, towards the rear in the corner, that meets the distance requirement from doing that. And, and these are the types of buildings that were built in the, in the, in the 70s and 80s, the long, almost shotgun kind of buildings, for that. I was going, I don't know where you're gonna go on the issue of co-location. I have to tell you, in meeting with the owners, and I was asking Stephen if, if Scott Hayden from the Apartment Owners Association was here, because he had told us he was gonna be here tonight, and I thought he might be a good person to bring up here to let you ask a couple of questions, and he's not here. Um, after meeting with them, and I, and I'm speaking without having them to confer with at this point, my sense is, they would be willing to go with this as a voluntary recommendation. If you're looking for a place to start with this, to go with this, if you're not willing, if, if you don't have a consensus to deal with co-location tonight, to at least have some sort of direction back to us to work with the owners, that this, that, that there's some sort of voluntary incentive to do this, to work towards co-location over time, that as they're renting units, that they start heading towards this. And then it'd give, without, if, if you're not of a mind to make it part of the ordinance, give us direction on how we work with the apartment owners to actually start a voluntary program to this, similar to what we did with the fresh air recognitions, and start working with that.
No, I don't, I don't have any problem with that whatsoever. Uh, I mean, I think that's a fine idea. But, um, I'm not sure, however, that a voluntary effort like that is going to get us to the point that Mr. Weaver foresees, uh, immediately. And that's, so I'm, I'm very happy to go that direction.
It's, yeah. It wouldn't get us there immediately, but it would start us down there, if that's what your mind is to do. It would certainly start us down the road, and, and owners would realize as they turn over units, here's an opportunity to get to someplace where they might make a difference in people's health, health over time.
Doesn't the ordinance already say 2013? Three years?
Not for co-location.
Not for co-location.
Does it say for co-location? Well, if we-
It's what you mean by co-location. It's the-
But they're saying it on the-
Separating of units or the designation of, of units, it's 2013.
Right, but what, what we're hearing, at least from Mr. Draymond at this point, is he doesn't want that in the ordinance.
Okay, Ms. Nogarian, what are your views?
Sam, do you, uh- Sam, do you anticipate your involvement to be complaint-driven? Or are you going to do apartment building by apartment building inspection and survey and all that?
Mr. Najarian, members of the city council, I would imagine most of it would be complaint-driven, but as we do our quadrennial inspections, we would check that. I don't know that we would do any enforcement, because unless you adopt it as a law, it would just be kind of a survey. We'd probably ask them, "Tell us where your smoking units are." And I have to tell you, the people are heading this way anyway, and I understand, and honestly, this was why we presented the ordinance the way we did, we looked at the human element of it. I think we'll probably get there, the question is whether you wanted to codify it tonight.
Mr. Drayman.
And that's exactly the point. That's the reason why I'm saying, just as we looked at this again after a year, I'm suggesting we do that exact same thing and reexamine this specific issue, and there may be other issues by that time and topics or things we neglected to look at, such as signs that say "no smoking," in a year, particularly if, Sam, as you say, it is moving that direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me ask Mr. Najarian, what are your feelings on the balcony?
Balcony in the apartments, I'll be in favor of prohibiting smoking on the balcony.
Mr. Weaver?
I just wanted to say, an ordinance can be changed at any time. I presume every six months or so, you will be back with some kind of report on success or failures or problems that you're running into. If there is a date in there, and it's unworkable, as you move towards 2013, for instance, there is a goal there. If you can't, well, a council in a couple of years will be in here changing the ordinance to 2015, 2016. But I'm looking at a motivation to try to do it, subject to what you find as we move down the path. This isn't law, it's an ordinance that we can change, right?
Congressman Weaver, it is law, but yes, you can change it.
Well, okay, it's a law, but you know what I mean. A council can change it, amend it at any time.
Right.
Okay, well, for me, I think it's going to have too much of an impact on people's lives. I just, I'm not ready to go there yet. I'm ready to talk about it a year from now, let's see where we go. In terms of the balconies, I'm okay with that to a certain point. I think we have to really stress the smoking area. Somehow, we have to really move that along, because I think people will continue to smoke on their balconies anyway. And so we're going to have no smoking in common areas, no smoking in patios or balconies. That'll be the next step. I agree with this approach with apartment owner associations and the larger management companies, and for the staff to be proactive and do all they can to start having a percentage of non-smoking units, et cetera. And I was very happy, I mean, STURPA is a big management company, got a lot of units under contract in addition to the ones they own. And so the fact that they're moving in that direction, I mean, if we really start encouraging it, I think it'll make a, certainly make a dent.
And Mayor Quintero, members of the council, they're representative of the larger property management companies, actually. They're all somewhat of the same mind. STURPA's been a little more assertive in implementation, Schultz being another one.
So we have three that are pretty much in accord, I think.
So, Mr. Howard, you're...
Which issue are we talking about? The balcony?
Balconies and patios.
And not enforcing 75%.
Yeah, I'd like to see a way that we can work towards that without setting, you know, any punitive issues, whether it's, I imagine we're going to start an outreach program anyway with all this new changes. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that it's the intent for council to move towards a, you know, a 25% at some point. That way, they can start thinking about it, and you won't have to uproot people and move them out, but...
Exactly. Mayor Quintero, members of city council, the community outreach program that you adopted originally, if you've written the staff report, you can see, got a little bit money left over, and that money was actually for a direct mailing to the owners of multifamily units. And we waited, we actually held off on that because we knew this issue was going to come up. We didn't want to email them something and then have the council change the direction on us. So after tonight, we'll go back and then actually send out, "This is what your intent is." And if it, realizing Mr. Weaver would like to see it codified, but hearing that there's three of you that are saying, "Yeah, this is the direction that we would like to head," and we come sort of some sort of language, that's what we would use that direct mailing for.
That's a very good idea.
Okay. But we held off specifically because of this one issue, because we had no idea what you want to do, and we haven't done that one part of our original outreach strategy that we said we did.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay, next, we, have we talked about, yeah, the disclosures, we're pretty well settled on what we want to do.
Yeah, that works.
All right, next is bingo. Where are we on the issue of church-run bingo games?
I'm staying right the way it is.
Well, I'd like to go in.
Okay, Mr. Najarian?
In fact, the way it is, is not the way it should have been, according to our last deliberations back in September 30th, 2008. At that point, four of us, four out of the five, had agreed that houses of worship should be exempt from this ordinance, subject, of course, to any state laws, which, particularly the labor code, which be in there. And I've been through the, and I always, as soon as this ordinance passed back a year and a half ago, I realized there was a mistake and had been inquiring about this throughout. I looked at some of the video, I've got it queued up, I don't want to do it yet, but needless to say, it was represented to council that in the ordinance that we were voting on that day, the houses of worship were exempt. I would like to go back to that. I don't want to get into any particular house of worship issue, whether it's a church, a synagogue, as long as they comply with state laws, I don't want our city ordinance to affect them. That's where I'm at.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We will exempt the houses of worship in their financial endeavors, bingo specifically. Mr. Drayman?
Well, I would agree with that, and that was my understanding at the time as well, Mr. Najarian.
All right, Mr. Weaver, so...
Well, I told you my experiences, subjecting a lot of people to it, it's not a, bingo parlor is not a church function, as far as I know. It's a financial benefit only.
So the record is abundantly clear, what I'm hearing is a consensus to eliminate or to exempt houses of worship/churches, including their bingo games and anything to do with them, within, essentially, we're exempting the place, not activity. And that we will, we can accomplish. Again, there'll be the issue of state law, but that'll be something different and separate.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, in that regard, to be very clear, I think we need some language that will relate to the primary premises of the church. So if a church rents a hall for the purpose of conducting bingo games off-site someplace else, that wouldn't fall under this provision. And we'll need to clarify that in the language.
And we'll do that and make sure we'll, when we come back in two weeks, we'll have that, not only that language, but it'll be highlighted for all of you to see, so that, I would urge you all to take a look at it, make sure it accomplishes what your goals are.
Well, and I would like to specifically make it the, you know, game of bingo. I don't want them to have other activities where smoking will be allowed. I mean, next, it could be a wedding at a particular hall or whatever. So for me, it's this particular activity. I don't know how the others feel, but...
Well, a wedding, I think you'd still be subject to the labor code.
Where you have employees.
Right.
As long as it's considered a place of employment.
Right. That would be prohibited if you've got caterers there.
Something's catered, if you've got paid employees, you're probably going to be banned or whatever.
Frankly, just from, maybe I'm stepping out a little bit here on this, my perspective...
Caution to the wind, Mr. City Council.
Yeah, and I'm about to do that.
A devil-may-care fellow.
At this point in time, it's about as devil-may-care as I get. If you are going to consider exempting the place, I don't think you should parse between a wedding and a bingo game or some other type of activity. If it's a church that we're going to exempt, exempt the church, and then...
The location.
Yeah, exempt the location of the church, not an ancillary rental hall, but don't parse between whether it's bingo, a wedding, a quinceañera, or something else that might occur at the church.
If I can, and the end...
Only because that would be covered by a state law.
Yeah, and likewise, there's the argument that bingo would as well, but again, there's dispute over that based upon this legislative council opinion that I mentioned earlier. And all of that would potentially apply, if it's a place of employment. Regardless of what our local code does, it's going to be covered by Labor Code 6404.5.
Mr. Drayman?
Well, the point was made, it's just that the issue to me is the, is that...
Go ahead.
Sorry. Is that it is the church itself and the state labor code, the issue of place of employment. So that's, for me, at this point.
That's been taken care of. Okay, now, I'd like to talk about new development.
Couple of things.
Oh, sure.
There, just taking this to the logical extension, if you have a festival at a church facility, that would be then, smoking would be permitted, because you've carved out the church facility as a place that is exempt from our ordinance. So if a church were to have a, best one, a number of them do, those, if the church were to want to make them smoking permitted, they would be that way.
So long as there's no employees and it's not considered a place of employment.
Right, I'm just...
By way of...
And how does that, but if, for instance, in this particular case, if they have outside vendors, if they bring in someone that's going to do hot dogs and popcorn, et cetera, and they're employees there, then they're going to be covered by the state.
More than likely, more than likely, yeah.
Or they hire a caterer.
Or they hire a caterer, that'd be correct.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Now, I'd like to talk about new development, because in this discussion, in terms of even the percentages and so forth, that's a totally different situation and one that I think the city could get involved in terms of percentages of smoking and non-smoking units, et cetera, right from the get-go, whether, I don't know if you could do it with condominiums, but whether it's a condominium or a, for sure, you could do it with an apartment, with apartment units. So what can we do to, you know, move the ball along those lines? Any ideas, Mr. Howard or Mr. Engel?
A couple of things, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, we talked about initially when we first started talking about the ordinance. One, any public housing could automatically be smoke-free, and we actually kind of already have that. You could take it to the next level, which would be, as developments come online, exactly what you say, we could come up with language that says, "From this point forward," so you're not making, you're not compounding the problem you already have. As you move forward, you could say, "From this point forward, your units meet this ratio." Now, it might be at least a place to start in addition to voluntary programs.
Okay, well, I would be very interested in either discussing that tonight or coming up with an ordinance, I'd be very interested that new construction fall under guidelines in terms of non-smoking, et cetera. Mr. Drayman?
What is the situation? You talked about public housing, so let's say affordable housing, affordable senior housing that we participate in, we provide a subsidy. What goes there right now?
But my understanding is they're smoke-free.
Okay, all right. I'd certainly be interested in hearing about, I'm not sure we can do it tonight, but I'd certainly be interested in hearing about new development with regard to apartments.
Okay. There's language from other cities, there's some...
Foodwork proposals. Okay, I think we're 4-0 on that one. Is there anything else we need to discuss that pertains to this? I think we've pretty well covered everything.
Yeah. Mr. Howard? I think Sam's probably going to go the same way I am, but maybe not. Why don't you go first?
We have churches that share facilities with schools. I hate to come back to that. I would, I just need to ask...
Good question.
Yes, what's your intent with those churches that share common facilities with schools? I don't want to go down where we're being...
No, no, listen, that's an absolutely good question. I'm already thinking of two or three that do just that.
Give us an example so we can sort of think of...
I don't want to name the churches, but...
Holy Family.
Salem Lutheran, the gentleman that was just up here. There are a number of them.
Okay, now, wouldn't the teachers, if there's employees there, come under the state labor code, 6404.5?
It should, yes.
We could also craft language that provides that while it is operating as a school, there shall be no smoking.
Right.
If I can, I can't imagine the state doesn't have regulations for daycare centers and schools about smoking that apply.
They do, and we also include that in our ordinance as well.
The other aspects are, you very well could have tot lots on church property, especially larger ones where they have schools, and of course, we don't permit smoking around tot lots or within distances of parks. So we may want to craft some specific language that where you have larger compounds that include schools, daycare, tot lot facilities, that those would not be exempted, and the same state standards or local ordinance standards would apply. Then the churches just had to figure out where they can do bingo where they don't have those kinds of problems.
And when usually bingo isn't occurring, when schools in session, they're usually in the evening.
You could provide that those things could, that smoking couldn't take place while there's children on the premises and things like that.
I do, I smell something.
You smell smoke.
I do, too, actually.
That's rather bizarre.
Heater kicking in.
There's torches outside.
They're after us. There is a smoke smell.
It's popcorn smell.
Okay, is there any...
I probably worked for a camp smell.
Anything else to discuss on this item? No?
No, I think that's good.
Mr. Engel and the entire staff, I want to thank you. You've done a heck of a job this past year, the previous years, writing the ordinance, all the research you've done, you've done a really, really good job. I want to thank you very much, on behalf of all the non-smokers in the city of Glendale and the families of the smokers that are having to suffer. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Most of the, not all the changes that have been suggested can be included in an ordinance if introduced tonight and brought back to you within two weeks for adoption, should you desire to do so. The other alternative is we can come back afresh within two or a number of weeks with the ordinance for introduction then. These changes are actually, a number of them have been contemplated by staff, the church issue, we can deal with, I think we can do that within two weeks, we've contemplated and had discussions about that. So all these changes could be included if the council were to, if the council member would be to want to step out and introduce this ordinance with these changes, we could bring that back for adoption in two weeks.
I think we might want to do it at a time when we're all present. I know we've got some travel...
That's March 9th, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned the date. That's the next date when all the council members are here.
Okay, why don't we do that? That way, we'll all be here.
Somebody wants to introduce the ordinance with the changes suggested?
I'll let Mr. Weaver have the honors.
Now, of course, I'm very disappointed, but I'll introduce, at least we've moved ahead a little.
With the changes as suggested by the majority.
Sorry, apartment dwellers.
A grudging introduction, but the ordinance has been introduced.
And it will return then March 9th for adoption, or consideration for adoption.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, at eight, see a city attorney regarding denial and findings regarding 1149 Cordova Avenue, setback variance, case number P V A R 2008-017. See one's motion adopting findings to deny setback variance.
Okay, Mr. Starburg.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would turn to Mr. Garcia and give him something to do as he's worked through the record and has prepared these findings for your consideration tonight.
Sir, I do. It's over here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mike Garcia, I really don't have anything to add. The findings were prepared after the public hearing held by the council and the discussion related to the setback variance for the two wooden gates at 1149 Cordova Avenue. Council did direct us to prepare those findings in accord with the record in the case. And so with that, I'll submit to any questions that the council may have.
I have a question, and that is, I think Mr. Najarian is the mayor pro tem.
Yes.
We have two cards.
Okay, if I'm the, am I the mayor pro tem?
Well, I think actually Laura is, but she's out.
Okay.
We beat this to death already.
Okay, we have two speakers on this matter. Mike Mohill, followed by Carol Welling. Ms. Welling, would you like to go first?
Good evening, Carol Welling, a member of the community. I'm speaking for a certain number of members of the community who wish the city council, the city manager, and city staff, particularly Mr. Najarian, Mr. Howard, and Mr. Nagani, a very happy, healthy, safe, sane, prosperous, and a very, very merry de novo.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Mike Mohill, resident Glendale, de novo, yes. Actually, when the word de novo came up, you, Mr. Draymond, Mr. Najarian, if you were the attorney at the time, I would want to hear from you too, but it's water over the bridge now. Okay. You know, I spoke with Mr. Arbut since this whole episode happened with Mrs. LaRue, and Mr. Arbut said, you know, the city council owes him an apology because Mrs. Welling smeared his name, okay? Yes, okay?
Mr. Mohill.
This is about the findings.
Mr. Mohill, I, this has been a...
Am I off? Am I off?
Your time has stopped, but I just want to remind you that this has been quite an ordeal for this city. There's been names called, obscenities written, charges, countercharges. If you could, for today, please stick to the, you can address the issues that are reflected in the findings, and if anyone wants an apology, they can call. Oh, Mr. Quintero's here, just in the nick of time. There you go, Mr. Mayor. So please, just keep it on point.
Okay, on point, okay. If that's the case, then I, as you would say in law, I rest my case there. Okay, thank you.
You need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to end this?
Any more discussion? Yes, Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 8C, one.
I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kusaki in Colorado.
Council members, Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
What's next?
Now, return to oral communication where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
Evening again, your honor, members of the city council, staff, members of the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. It never ceases to amaze me, the magic of Glendale. The fifth grade students that came about the census, I thought were marvelous. I just, I just think it's terrific. Imagine that they are already looking at what they should do as citizens of our country, not just of Glendale. I think that was really a terrific thing for their teacher and to promote that idea. And a lot more people could take that up in the idea that we need that census will help our city and our country to move forward with what we need to do. And the next thing is, on March the 2nd is Arbor Day, and you can order trees from Gladys Wyemore at 818-246-3634. And the reason I'm doing it is because there won't be another city council meeting before that. And they hold it at the Casa Dobby on Dorothy at 10 o'clock in the morning, and if it's a beautiful day, hopefully it won't rain. And it is a beautiful place to hold a meeting. It really is a wonderful, one of our jewels of our city. Again, marvelous things happen in our city. The other thing is that, okay, on Monday evening, the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council meeting will be held at 7:00 PM, that's March the 1st, at the police community room, in the police community room. They are going to be hosting our group, and that is on Isabel, at the police building. So all are welcome. You don't have to belong to any of the associations or anything. Just come, and we're going to, I think Chief DePampa will be there and some other people of our wonderful police department that will be there to be part of our meeting that evening. Again, you know, there was something, and I don't know whether Mike Mohill misspoke when he said ignorant people live below 134, or he meant immigrant. I'm not sure. But if he's saying ignorant, I'm taking exception to that because there are very, a lot of people, whether they're immigrants or not, are doctors and lawyers and CPAs and teachers that live down on my street. So I really take exception to calling them ignorant people. They may not always speak the language, but that doesn't make them ignorant, you know? So, and then, of course, I have been very busy this week watching, I don't know how many of you have been watching the Olympics. I end up staying up till 3:30 and 4:00 in the morning, and particularly when the Canadians are competing, although they lost the hockey, but hey, we have another turn, we have another turn Thursday night. Well, it's one of those things in life. Some of us, you know, you can take the gal out of Canada, but you can't take Canada out of the old gal. So, but, and I say to everybody, we all have a right to that feeling, but it sure is wonderful watching those young people. I don't know how many of you have been during it. They're just so fantastic, the athletes and what they do and how they get along. I don't know, how many countries are there, 80? And they're having a wonderful time together, even though they're competing against each other. Let's learn from those people, from those young people, and what they're accomplishing. I mean, breaking records and the wonderful things they're doing there, and how much they're enjoying it, and how much enjoyment they're giving to the rest of the world. Okay, that's me for the time. Thank you.
Should take a snowboarding. Mike Mohill, followed by Scott Peir.
Evening, Mayor. It's council members, Mike Mohill, resident. I don't believe I used the word ignorant. That would not be part of my vocabulary. The word would be immigrant. Okay? So I'll leave it at that, because I know there are, the point was, there are 20,000 immigrants living in South Glendale, and Ms. Najarian had mentioned it, Margaret. The reason I called, came up today and spent this time waiting for my turn, was about the report in the news press today about the target, the land on San Fernando Road. I'm very excited about the idea that the city is thinking about purchasing about 9.5 acres for $22 million. I've known about this going on for some time now, but I kept my mouth quiet because I was asked to. But, you know, this morning, I'm thinking about, and I'm reading this thing, and I'm reading about all this hazardous material that's there right now. And the hazardous material makes me wonder, would I want to have a parkland in an industrial area of the city that's not serene? You know, having a soccer field in this area would be like having a Rolls Royce parked in a dealership of a Kia or Hyundai. This should be a pretty area, just like Verdugo Park, Loretta Park, Nibbly Park, Brand Park. You got traffic on San Fernando Road, you got the freeway, you got the fumes from there, you got the railroad, all the noise from the railroad. It's not a pretty area. It's not pretty. And that's important because when people go to a park, they're looking for serenity. Now, I like the idea, we're going to, you know, you're thinking about getting a park, a sports complex, but it's a good idea. Unfortunately, it's the wrong location. Rock Haven is not located in an industrial area of the city. It's on Honolulu with a bunch of, with a whole bunch of oak trees. There's not one tree in this area, and it's hazardous waste. Would somebody want to have their kids playing on this site, even though the super fund money has come ahead and cleaned it all up? You know, no one's perfect. They leave, always leave something behind, and I wouldn't want my children playing at this park. I don't care if you put 100 feet of fresh dirt. That would concern me as the parent, because if I found out that at one time, this was an industrial area, and it was a super fund site, you know? It's a good idea, but the wrong location. Now, since I have two minutes left, let's talk about Mrs. LaRue and the gate fence, Mrs. Welling read Vanguard Newslet and assumed that Mr. Arbut had said something awful about her. Mr. Arbut said he never did. Mrs. Welling said that Mrs. LaRue was involved with porno on the website Ask Men, and Mrs., there's no way you can find that on the website. There's no such thing, and she's never there. Mr. Arbut is not, is due an apology. He never spoke. I think the parties should get together and talk together. I hate to be the third party, but I think this is terrible, makes the city look awful. Council looked, council spent more time on Mrs. LaRue than discussing the budget, which is millions of dollars. You talked about the budget for what, one hour, or was it 15 minutes? And you just say note and file, but you spent hours on the gate. I think we have our priorities wrong. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Scott Peir, followed by Carol Welling.
Good evening, I'm Scott Peir. Thank you for listening. I'm here to talk about solar energy again. I'll continue where I left off last time, showing how difficult it is to help cleaning up our environment by telling the story of my unsuccessful effort to build a solar system in Glendale. In 2007, I selected an architect to design my solar system for my garage, and I selected a solar contractor. In October 2008, the G W P interconnection agreement was signed, and we thought we were weeks away from construction, but planning rejected our application. I was aware of state laws prohibiting cities from applying aesthetic rules such as zoning to solar systems, so I thought I'd contact the city attorney, who would just inform planning about the law, and then we'd proceed with our system. But when I talked to Mike Garcia, I got no support. In November 2008, I gave a presentation to the city council. Dave Weaver said, let's get going on this. After the meeting, actually, a Glendale resident handed me a note, she just happened to be here, and she said how it took her 10 months to get her solar system approved. Couple days later, I got a written denial from Mike Garcia. It appeared that what was being called for was an objective legal analysis, but instead, the city's attorney office delivered an advocacy piece promoting its position that the city can restrict solar systems for aesthetic reasons. Several significant points in letter had already been discussed on the phone, and I'd already told him that the points were not valid. Later, my attorney wrote him, saying the same thing, the points are not valid. After that, I got an independent second legal opinion, said the same thing, the points are not valid. The state legislature has Glendale code on file as an example of non-conformance. Council member Bob Yosefian also said that the city attorney is wrong, to use his word. Finally, a few weeks ago, the state deputy attorney general wrote, saying that the city makes four contentions. Each of these arguments lacks merit. I'm going to go into the state deputy attorney's letter right now, written on the State of California Department of Justice letterhead. The city of Glendale currently is not in compliance with the Solar Rights Act. Now, remember, the Solar Rights Act was written in 1978, so we've had 30 years to start complying with it. It's been amended a few times, and those, you know, we're obviously not in compliance with those either. Down at the bottom, there's a footnote that says, "The attorney general submits these comments pursuant to his independent power and duty to protect the natural resources of the state from pollution, impairment, or destruction in furtherance of the public interest," which begs the question, why isn't that also the city's duty? So just a little more on the letter that Mike Garcia wrote. In this letter, I'm just going to read some passages out from the state deputy attorney general. In this letter denying the permanent application to install a solar energy system, the city makes four contentions. First, okay, he goes through basically these points, she that is. Each of these arguments lacks merit. That's basically, in plain English, that says the arguments are wrong. A few more points. Contrary to the city's assertion, solar energy systems include both the solar panels and the supporting structures. Here's another point. The city should amend its municipal code to exempt applications for solar energy equipment from all zoning regulations. This is exactly what I have been saying for close to a year now to the city. Exempt applications for solar energy equipment from all zoning regulations. This is 30 years now that this has not been done. Continuing on, the deputy attorney general talks about, "The city claimed the lack of zoning control may result in unsightly installations that are excessively high or architecturally incompatible." So it goes on, "The city's ability to block or delay solar energy systems is based on aesthetic concerns, which is in direct conflict with government code section 65850.5." So direct conflict is what we have here. So the city is not in compliance with the Solar Rights Act, has not been taking action to correct that situation. In fact, the planning, there was a, I don't know, we've been through this. So I guess hopefully at some point, you'll decide to start complying with state law. I was hoping that we would move beyond state law and actually become a progressive city and start cleaning up our environment, but right now, we're just fighting about getting into compliance with the bare minimum standards of state law.
Carol Welling, followed by Laurie Collins.
Well, Carol Welling, I hope I'm not wearing out my welcome, but I have something I think is very important, and I think I will get a lot of support. I'd like for the councilmen and the city staff to take a small field trip, which I did. I came off the 5 freeway and took Colorado into Glendale, which is basically our gateway for a lot of people. It's terribly, terribly crowded at Christmas time. And as you enter the business area, there's a small triangle piece of property there. Currently, I don't know who owns it, I think it may be the city. I'm hoping it's the city. Currently, just as you cross over the river and you come into the business area, there's this area, there's now, it's kind of trashy, there's, you know, the weeds are growing up with the water and rest of that stuff, but it's a prime spot for a sign saying Glendale, like we have on San Fernando, not San Fernando, but Glen Oaks. A beautiful sign. All the cities are doing that now, making a sign with flowers as you're entering into Glendale, coming to our Galleria, coming to the Americana, coming to our Main Street. We want to welcome people with the business the way it is now. We need to do our best to bring it in, and if you will go to this spot, it is, it's weeds and trash right now, and it's, I don't know who owns it, I'm hoping it's the city. So I think it's, we need some real good curb appeal for people coming because, you know, the Americana wants people, upscale people to come. I mean, some of those shops, I've never even heard of them before, they're so upscale for me. So I think it's, would be a primary spot. It's a good introduction to the city, and as I was saying before, we've already got an example, when you come from Burbank into Glendale, there's a sign there, it's beautiful, it's tile and stone and stuff like that. So I think we want to be proud of our city, and please take a look at that little piece of property there. Something could be done, and I want the city to not fail. I mean, I'm reading things about things closing up, and we need to get in with the rest... I mean, I'm reading things about things closing up, and we need to get in with the rest of the people who are putting arches now over main, main highways and things like that to attract and beautify. So anyway, that's, that's my thought for the day, and thank you so much. I'm sorry, three times, I guess it's a charm. Thanks.
Laurie Collins.
Excuse me, I didn't plan to speak again tonight, but I am chief counsel for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and I was very heartened by the news that the city might be buying this nine acre site. Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has partnered with the city of Glendale to buy the Oakmont property. We've bought lots of Billy Goat property, as we call it, but we also work on parks in the urban core. And parks in the urban core are so important for adults and for children. We, we have built parks on, right now, we're working on a park on a former plating plant that had chromium 6, and we were able to remediate it and take care of it, and it will be a safe park. We built a 14 acre park in downtown LA at the former Belmont site, Vistremosa. We have made it safe. It's, it's possible to do with proper remediation and, and proper planning. And we've also worked on a park in Maywood, which is a former Clorox bleach manufacturing plant. We were able to properly remediate that park. So I, I disagree with Mr. Arbut. I think it's extremely important that you pursue this. I'm speaking on my own, as, not as a member, or as a representative of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, but I would encourage you to talk to our planners, because this sounds like a wonderful opportunity for the city.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any comments? Mr. Drayman?
On that note, I'm curious who it was that, that, of course, I don't want an answer, I really don't want to know, but there, I am kind of curious, who, who it was that asked Mr. Mohill not to speak? But in any case, I would direct him back to the article to which he referred. There was nothing in that article that said the city of Glendale is contemplating paying $22 million or any other number. It simply mentioned that that is what the owner, the current owner of the property paid for it, when they purchased it some time ago. Anyway, I would also point out that that site backs up to a very heavily residential, very heavily residential area. Last thing is for Mr. Peir. I, Mr. Peir, I, I certainly understand what, what you're saying. I'm not sure that I know enough about the legalities of it, but what I would say to you is what others have said time and time and time again to you, which is, why don't you apply for your variance and move it through the process?
Okay, any other comments? I think a sign there at the entrance, as you come off the freeway, as we know, that's the city of LA, all of the different industrial buildings, but further up, that is the entrance to the city of Glendale. Do we have a sign there now? There isn't any sign at all?
After LA, you get through Caltrans property, Mr. Mayor, so it would have to be out on the Colorado somewhere, whether that's in the middle of the median or somewhere else.
As you come up right at the beginning of the, where the stop sign is, I mean, whether the streetlights are, but it would be a good idea. You may not be able to plant any grass, but something kind of decorative, that might, I think, not might, I think that's a very good idea. Okay, next, please. Is there any new business? Do you have new business?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, just to inform the council that Mr. Garcia is evaluating the deputy attorney general's advocacy piece. This was not written by the opinions section. It appears to be a single deputy AAG that's taken upon himself to inject himself into this issue. Mr. Garcia is evaluating that and will certainly give it all the credence that it's due and evaluated appropriately.
Thank you. Any other business? Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Gibbs, Giddon, Locker, Turner, and Senate LLP, Barbara Gadboy, to assist the city attorney in, to assist the city attorney with the evaluation of bid rela, excuse me, of bid-related issues for community services and parks projects. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Give a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.